I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly individual, and legislative decisions for our own.
Is Mr. Sylvia here? Okay, in the interest of saving Mr. Sylvia some time, I'd like to take Resolution 1440 out of order. Is there any objection?
No, none.
Resolution 1440 authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds. Please proceed.
Before you tonight is authorization to do a refunding on the town's 2006 bonds. The town is currently in the process of going through a refunding on the 2004. That was issued, approval was issued on that last year. We had sought authorization for '03 and '04 last year, right around this time. We actually only did the refunding at that time on '03. We're now doing '04 now. The refunding of '06 has become available, both as a result of the market upswing and the recent bond upgrade of the town. Because of that, the refunding of the '06 has become available. It's a very small issuance. It's not one we'd do a refunding on its own. It'd have to be coupled with something else. But it will net savings for the town in the area of 50,000 to 60,000 pending what we end up locking in at.
In this fiscal year?
Yes.
Are there any questions, Councilor Murray?
Brian, when you say 50,000 this year, it's just this year itself?
Well, the vote will be in the current fiscal year of '15. But they will be, on average, it's about, again, this is estimates right now. The market may change and may shift. But what we're going off of right now is, give or take, 50,000 in the current year and 3,000 to 5,000 each additional year for the balance of the term.
So there'll be an overlap as we move along, but again, everything is by the market.
The net savings is approaching 70,000. 50,000 in year one, and the balance of 5,000 or so each additional year.
Good, thank you.
Also, DeCosta.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mrs. Sylvia. Just to clarify and for my personal comprehension of this, basically all we're doing is like refinancing a mortgage. We are borrowing at a lower rate to pay a higher...
Correct. Well, I shouldn't say, the only difference when you refinance, you'd start the clock again. We are not adding any additional years to the term. It is, if, on these bonds, if, say, there's 10 years left, we are maintaining the 10 years left. We are not...
Is there any expenses attached to this refinancing?
They're rolled into the refinance itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions? Councilor Landby?
Thank you, Sylvia. Great work getting the bond rating increased again. It's another change, another uptick for the town. I was noticing the Moody's report, and it says that what could change the rating on a downward rate would be failure to reduce pension and OPEB liabilities. It says it right on the report. And during the budget proceedings, I had asked that our budget be amended to continue to put a little more money in the OPEB line to improve what appears to be a major concern for our bonding agency.
That's, Councilor Landby, that's not germane to this resolution.
My point was, is I wanted to talk about trying to keep the bond rating up so that we could continue to refinance bonds, and...
It's not germane to this resolution. This resolution seeks to refinance.
Then I just want to ask if there are any other bonds, Mrs. Sylvia, that are going to come up for refunding in the near term?
Not, probably two years after we do the '06. There would be an '08 available, but that probably would not be available for refunding for about two years.
So the only savings we're going to have is this one here?
And the '04. We're doing the '04, which we've already gotten authorization on. We're doing, the refunding we're looking to do right now, that will be closing on in August, will be the '04 and the '06.
Oh, okay, oh, the '06, okay, thank you.
Thank you. The savings will be over a 10-year period.
Correct.
Congratulations on the bond upgrade.
Thank you.
Good work. What is it, in the last two years, where has it gone and where is it now?
It was A1 negative outlook previously from Moody's. It went to then A1 stable, and now it's AA3.
Thank you.
That's Moody's, and S&amp;P was reaffirmed at AA.
Pledge of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. Who said that? Councilor Landby moves to approve, sent by Councilor Kerns. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes seven-nothing. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, next, back to general announcements. A request by Mayor McKee to discuss the preservation of the monastery property. Mayor?
Yes. Most people are here to talk about the monastery, although I do take the opportunity to, that's the eighth bond upgrade since we've been, since my administration's been in office, to AA from about one point over junk bond. So not only congratulations to Brian and the staff, but each and every individual that has worked in that finance department, town council, and the workers in the town of Cumberland, certainly, you know, should get a strong pat on the back. And so what I wanted to do tonight was just to kind of outline a little history and about my administration's efforts for the benefit of the people who may not have heard this or may not have known, in terms of our record for conserving property in the town of Cumberland. And I'm just going to give a quick overview on that and then talk about the monastery and some of the politics that is creeping into this, into this, you know, issue, quite frankly, is revolting. So when I go to a press conference this morning and attend that, and I see campaign signs at the press conference, I don't go because that's a campaign issue, right? That's a campaign issue that was called this morning. And that's what's happening here on one side of the coin, but also I want to speak to the people who are really genuinely interested in the story, and not for political reasons, but interested in the story, and give some level of background, at least as when I read from some of the more political comments, including letters to the editor, that somehow that I stand to destroy the monastery, and I stand as a, not a supporter of open space and conservation in this community. And that is like so far from the truth. There's no one who's conserved more property in this town than my administration's. There is nobody who's put more management plans in place on open space in this community than my administration. And there's no one who is been more diligent in terms of protecting the monastery than my administration. So you can't argue those points. And so tonight, Josh is going to, from our planning department, has provided the council and signs, you know, maps up here that talk about the acquisition and the purchase of property at virtually no expense to the people in the town of Cumberland. 500 acres of land that has been acquired during my administration at virtually no cost to the town of Cumberland. Again, that's not just me, it's working with the land trust, the conservation committee, people like Lorraine Hines and John McCoy and others, working very diligently with the administration to protect property in the town of Cumberland. And tonight, we're going to take one step further, where, again, the politics creeps in. And people who have supported administrations in the past have advocated for ATV tracks in this community. They've advocated for golf courses in this community on the monastery land. They have advocated for a huge expansion of commercial property. The very people who are putting up signs in this town to preserve Diamond Hill or to preserve Franklin Farm, we have done that. The evidence is there. I don't particularly speak to that issue quite often, and certainly let the record stand for itself. But tonight, where I can't trust the fact that these flip-flopping that's going on and the inaccuracies that are being talked about, that somehow I am, my administration is violating the charter, because of what, whether you like the idea or you don't like the idea, we are not violating the charter. And for two councilmen to say that we're violating the charter, that creates a uneasiness in this community because you should be able to believe people who would talk about that. This is not violating the charter. Okay, so let's take that off the table immediately. And that's what's inflaming this issue, and it's not, we should be talking about this issue in a way where everybody who's in here that's really honestly concerned about the issue, they should be able to speak, but let's speak the truth. Let's speak the truth. Woodson Churchill said, "A lie can go around the world in the time that a truth puts on its sneakers." And that's what's happened. We are chasing inaccurate statements, and it's going to impact decisions that are going to be made in this community. Disagree with me, but don't, don't question this administration's effort to protect land in this town. So tonight, because I, quite frankly, I'm thrilled to be able to do it, and I was happy to sign the ordinances that Jeff Mutter put forward in 2004, that was on, which was preceded, well, actually came after, multiple land management plans in the town of Cumberland. And then we worked with the Conservation Commission on Franklin Farm land management plan, on Schofield Farm, and the list goes on and on and on. So when I have to read that somehow that our administration, my administration, the chief of police and the rescue director are all conspiring to ruin the monastery, I find that offensive. So what we propose, what we'll propose on this position before the, before the vote, in terms of allowing the community to determine whether this portion of land is appropriate in their minds, I don't want to connect the two. They're not connected. I will put in front of this town council, before the election, to put a 20-year easement in a trust, unlike the easement that currently stands, which this town council could change at any time by more than a majority vote. And if they veto it, veto-proof it, they'll need five votes. So I can't really trust the fact that, you know, what politics is going to play in this thing, and I'm very happy to be forward and present to the county council in advance of your vote tonight, on whether you actually give the people in this town a chance to weigh in on something that is very consistent with what Mr. Hayden and the founders of this town said at the time of the acquisition of that property, and it's documented. You can refute it, but it's documented. You could disagree today on this timeline, and you have every right to do it, but there's certain facts that you can't disagree with, and that is a fact. And the public needs to hear that. The public at large needs to hear the facts before a decision's made. So I'll propose to this town council before the election in November, that we set up a trust that is apart from the town, and we'll give that key, the key to that trust. So the easements on 98-plus percent of that property, 98 percent of that property, will be under a key for 20 years, and nothing can be done on that. And then 20 years from now, it reverts back to the town, and then the leaders in the community at that point in time can determine what is in the best interest of this community, and the public can weigh in at that point in time as well. The remaining acreage will still be under the current ordinance and the current easement that was passed in 2004. That will not change. Yet I hear the argument that somehow we're violating the ordinances. To violate the ordinance, you actually have to go out and build on the property. There's no building permits in hand, and if anybody in this town, including me, directed a construction on that site under the current ordinance, we'd be in violation of that ordinance, and we should be held accountable for that. So what I would like to, if I can indulge the council, to bring Josh up, I want to outline the properties that have been protected during my administration. I think I need to do that. I need to set the record straight on that issue. And then the idea of this preservation easement, we will move on that. I will bring that to the town council regardless of the outcome of the vote tonight, and regardless of the outcome of the vote in November, if in fact that vote goes to the people, which I believe it should. So I'd like to have Josh just come up and just show, for the benefit of the people at home, and also the benefit of the people in the audience here that came with an open mind, to take a look at the history of my administration relative to open space in this town, which I am very proud of. I am proud to be working with someone like Joe. I'm proud to be working with people like Frank Mutter and Julie. So Josh, please just show that. And then I'm done with my presentation, and when you get to the vote on the site, it's up to the president, whether you, both our chief of police is here and our rescue directors here, to make a presentation and to create balance in this discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. How many people are, cannot even hear anything? Are there people outside that can't hear? Because we've got some room up here. I don't care if they come in. How many people are, can't hear anything? Come up, come up. I got a reporter back there, too, that's taking pictures. I don't know, if there's room up here, I don't care if they want to come up. All right. Go ahead, Josh.
Mr. President, point of order?
What is it?
We're going to hear from the mayor, we're going to hear from our public safety folks. I think there are a couple of people here from the public who'd like to speak. I want to be assured that they will have a chance to speak if we're going to be listening to...
Is that, what is that, how is that a point of order? You questioning the way I'm going to run the meeting?
Well, I know we closed the public hearing on this ordinance.
No, there's no public hearing. This is a resolution, Councilor. This is not an ordinance.
I just want to be assured, Mr. President, that folks can hear us speak.
Well, when we get to that, we'll decide. I run the meeting. Your point of order is out of order. Go ahead, Joshua.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to have an answer on that as well. Will the people be allowed to speak?
Yes, the people will be allowed to speak. They're always allowed to speak. When have I ever stopped the public from speaking?
Thank you.
I resent the...
There's been articles, allegations, and obviously we know the sentiment of the people, so...
Please proceed, Joshua.
Thank you, Councilman.
Stop all the grandstanding people, okay? This is an important issue. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Josh O'Neil. As the mayor said, I do work for the planning department. My official title is town planner. I work under the direction of the town's planning director, Kelly Morris, who some of you know. I just would like to say for the folks that came in a little bit late, we did print out a series of maps. There's maps of the plat and lot of the monastery land and the dates that they were purchased, the years 68 and 72. We also have maps of the trail maps that the town maintains on the monastery. I've also printed out a land use map of the town, as well as a map that will illustrate some of the land that has been conserved during the key administration. If anyone wants copies, they are available up here. If we run out, I have more available in the office that I can hand out to anyone who's interested. Sort of on a personal note, I do want to just thank everyone for coming out. I think this, you know, just goes to show that the civic, you know, activity of this town is alive. People care about their town. I think that's a very admirable thing, to take time, you know, out of your lives to come here is very, is a very good thing and reflects well upon the town of Cumberland. What I'm going to do here is I'm going to go through just a very brief PowerPoint, just a few slides, to kind of summarize what Mayor McKee was just talking about, and then I'll try and pull up these maps in the laptop through the projector. I know this room is a little difficult to see things on a projector, so if that becomes a problem, again, I'll just say refer to the maps. It'll be a lot easier to look at those, and I will try and speak up over there so everyone can hear me. I have a pretty loud voice, so it's usually not a problem. If I go, you know, without a mic, I'm sure you can hear me. If there are any issues, definitely let me know. So if that's okay with you guys, I'm going to get over here and see if I can fire this thing up. It is a little bit darker now, the sun sets, that's a good thing. You almost couldn't see this one, some of that. Is that okay? So again, these are some, just following the conservation highlights during the McKee administration. These are some of the major parcels put into conservation. There certainly are, the list is a lot longer than this. There's a lot of parcels that are probably 10 acres or less, that are scattered throughout the town, that are put in conservation, that one would be, you know, hard to list on a map that I printed out and have available for handouts. And also, you know, just compiling the town parcel data, I would have had to take a few more hours to get that list going, but just for purposes of visualization and comparison, we have Emerson property, which is 215 acres, which was conserved. Blackall property, which is about 119 acres. The Staples property, which is 90 acres. The Pratt property, 50 acres. The Graff property, 17 acres. All that land has been conserved during this administration is about 491 acres. Like I said, there's certainly a lot more than that. It's well over 500 acres, but just for the purposes of comparison, that's 491 right there. On the handout, they're shown as green parcels. I am missing the Graff parcel on there because it's not available in the parcel data, but that is shown where the label is. And I'll bring that up on the laptop in just a second. The mayor referred to some conservation management plans. This is not the exhaustive list, but again, just the highlights. We have the Anthony Lawrence Lot Life Preserve. That's a 60-acre area that's for the preserve. The Cumberland, Cumberlandite property, sorry, I'm not from Cumberland, so this doesn't roll off my tongue as easily as everyone else. Cumberlandite property is 3.75 acres. Franklin Farm, which everyone is well aware of, 65.3 acres. Heinz Farm, I think it also is, I didn't write it down, but it's known as Heinz Farm for most people, 118.7 acres. Again, the monastery, 525 acres, which we're talking about tonight. Sneetch Pond actually has 330 acres. Around Sneetch Pond, there is also under a conservation management plan that was put into effect during the McKee administration. And just for some clarity here, I know people haven't had a chance to talk tonight, but what I'm trying to do is try and make this more clear for all the people who showed up, what we're talking about, where the proposed public safety facility would be located, which is one of the valid questions, where that land actually is in relation to the 525 acres. It's a lot of land, so we want to know what we're talking about. So the two questions before us, really, like the mayor said, there's two separate questions. Should the voters approve financing for a new public safety building? Do you believe the conditions of the buildings now, which are pretty deplorable, do you warrant the town to invest in the facility? And then a separate question, which everyone in this room is well aware of, should the proposed new public safety building be located on 10 acres of land on the 525-acre monastery site? And as the mayor just proposed, he would also like to see 98 percent of that land, basically the rest of the land subtract that 10 acres, take everything else out, and preserve it for 20 years, not to be touched or developed. So what I'm going to do here is switch to the maps. The first one is probably the most pertinent, and it's going to be the hardest to see, I think. I've tried this before and it came out really light. This is a map that I believe was talked about at the previous meeting, and it is reflective of the separate pieces of the monastery, and when they were purchased, and what the actual lot lines look like. You'll see at the bottom, there's some notes there that say, you know, the plaque is the first number, 520 lot 8. And then the year is here, 1968 is one of these five lots for December 23rd, 1968. Everyone knows chunks of land were purchased, and then '72 is when the rest was completed, as the monastery that we know it today. The area that we're talking about is in the northern part of the monastery, in the box Diamond Hill Road. I think there was some concern and some misunderstanding that there was a proposal, this proposal was somewhere near the existing library or the existing building footprints that are on the monastery. That is not the case. This, and I'll show in the other maps as well, this is where the footprint exists now, the library, the senior center, and all the other town facilities. That's towards the bottom of the monastery. As we scroll up, we are talking about, again, you can see it here in the plaque, 22 lot 8. This is where the power lines run. The high tension wires are very easy to see on aerial photography. The 10 acres are above that, the budding Diamond Hill Road, and we're talking about this area, you know, right here above the power lines, well north of the existing trail system, well north of the existing buildings and facilities for the town that are already there. There is a chunk of land, if you're unaware, that's actually privately held at the intersection of Angel and Diamond Hill Road, which is almost the same size. We're not talking about that land in case, you know, people thought maybe it was that footprint versus this footprint. This 10 acres, roughly 10 acres, is private. This is part of the monastery here, and this is the area that we're talking about tonight, 10 acres, just the ordinary power lines on Diamond Hill Road. And what I'm going to do here, I know there's some concern about how close it is to the trail system, and it's in misery, so I'll switch over to a trail map in just a second, just to reiterate, again, a little hard to see on the projector, but try and... So I highlighted some of those big highlights, Blackall, Emerson, Pratt, Staples, conserve property, 491 acres that have gone into conservation during the McKee administration. Graff is actually right about here as well, 17 acres, and that is not highlighted, so I apologize for that. I couldn't find the parcel in the GIS. This is the monastery land, highlighted down here in yellow, so just kind of a comparison, we're talking about almost 500 acres or more than 500 acres there, and 500 acres of the monastery, so that's a lot of land. And then just kind of from a planning perspective, did print out a map of land use for the town. The state puts this map together. They updated it, I want to say, over five years for communities, and it's based on a lot of data that the town provides, but also satellite imagery. And this shows in the hatch areas, all the conserved land in the town, that's either town-protected or state-protected under purchase or conservation easement, in the hatch areas. So there is quite a bit of it throughout the town, and again, I was just highlighting, you can see that going across here with Sneetch Pond going east, and then again, towards Diamond Hill Reservoir. And if you like a kind of larger view, you're talking easily, a third of the town in conservation. Actually, the planning department is currently working on updating the town's comprehensive plan, and we're updating the open space section right now, looking over the numbers, so we'll be updating those numbers based on state data and town data, and I think it's actually well in excess of 30 percent of the land. It's probably closer to 40 percent of the land in town, so that's just a reference there. And to go back to the trail maps, I know there... And to go back to the trail maps, I know there are a lot of people here that use the trail system at the monastery. It's a very nice trail system, I've used it myself, I like it. I want to see some more trail signage up. I think there's a lack of signage, and we need to work on that. Something I want to work on, hopefully I'll get a chance pretty soon to work on that volume. And what we have here is a trail map. It'll be a little hard to see, so I'm gonna try and zoom out a little bit, see if that clarifies it, not really. Sorry about that, it's all the videos and the light everything. So again, when I showed you before the plot lots and all the property boundaries for the monastery, this is the same area here. Here's the power lines, it's labeled. You can see it again with the aerial photography going in a line like this. The 10 acres site is being proposed for a potential public safety facility site, is this land here. Again, the existing trail system doesn't really go beyond the power lines. There may be some people that think there's trails north of there. We're considering that, if there are any, that people would do on their own, non-town maintained trails. The systems of trails identified and named are really trails that the town at one time or another has maintained, or put in some effort on it. So we would consider those town maintained trails to some extent. The land is well north of the town maintained trails. The nine main men's misery site, which is off the trail here, is roughly in this area. You can see it better on the map I handed out. And the 10 acre parcel is up here off Diamond Hill Road. One of the other options we have, that I don't think has got any discussion, but is worthy of some discussion, is that if a new public safety facility does go on the 10 acres, there is an opportunity to develop some new trails that could connect to the existing trail level, and kind of benefit a lot of the residents of that area of the monastery, and bring it into the trail system that exists today. D E M is showing some interest in that, at the Department of Environmental Management. We have spoken, the mayor and I have spoken to D E M about, you know, what can be done if a new safety facility comes in, that it must have better chance of getting some funding, some grant funding for trailheads and trail connections. And they seem very enthusiastic about that idea. So something to consider there, if a new facility goes in, we may actually be able to invest in more town maintained trails on the monastery itself. I think that pretty much covers the maps I was gonna pull up here, then handout. Again, you see the site here, it's unclear, just look at the handouts, it's a little clearer. Right off of Diamond Hill Road. And should not affect any of the town maintained trails, does not touch nine men's misery. And I think that's very important for all of you, for the town, for the residents, as well as town employees who treasure this land as well. I know, maybe you must go up there on our lunch break and walk the trail, so, you know, it's something we take part in too.
Joe. You want to give the maps, Joe?
There's plenty of maps, I have them on the office, if you want some pictures. So again, we have a series of trail maps, a series of land use maps, a series of sort of a history of conserved properties and land use. I hope that will help clarify some of the discussion that has already gone on, and some of the discussion that will go on in the future as the town considers what's gonna be on the ballot in November. And I hope that we can do whatever we can to kind of support and clarify the issues here, and clear out any misunderstandings that may exist.
Now, this parcel has some wetlands on it. There's a plot 22, lot 8. There are some wetlands around the edge of the back and on the side that are showing up, I believe. But the building is not anywhere, would be not located within anywhere near the wetlands. Correct?
That's mine, all of that's correct. I'm not, you know, an expert on the wetlands at the monastery at this time.
Well, I'm just saying what I've observed.
From what I've heard.
Through looking at the GSI mapping system.
Yep.
Which is available, if you're technologically savvy enough, to view on the town website under both the planning department and the tax assessors office. And there are things you can highlight on it. You can even like map out 10 acres, see what, how the size compares to the entire parcel. And the trail maps are on the library website. Alexandra already knows all this, but just for the rest of you, you know, just so, you know, just want to make it as informed a decision as possible. Thank you, Joshua. All right, is there any objection to taking the communication from the rescue and police first? With the idea that we're gonna have a full presentation before, you want to go first, Sean? Does the chief? Yeah, he's out in the hallway. He can come in, why doesn't he come in? Stand behind Sean. This is the rescue director, Sean Thompson.
Good evening, thank you, President Nagin and members of the council. Certainly, you know, one of the things that I just wanted to bring to light is that many of you are aware, and certainly the council is aware, that, you know, our present facility was constructed in 1930. It was a school administration building, a schoolhouse, if you will, and later was converted into our rescue headquarters. We've been there, next year will mark 35 years, in 1980, as it was, the rescue service was incorporated. You know, it's a building that is, it's weathered. You know, and certainly over the time, over time, you know, we have improved a lot, you know, certainly my four years in tenure, we've improved some of the facility, but at this point, we've just simply outgrown it. In 2006, there was a plan, there was a committee that was formed to kind of define whether or not we were to move off that site. And, you know, several locations were explored at that time, or options were explored at that time, and the plan kind of fell apart. In 2012, D I J consultants came in, and that is Don Jacobs, most of the council would know him as Don Jacobs. And certainly, members of the community might know, you know, the Don Jacobs report, just kind of outlining fire consolidation. And I will say, this is not about fire consolidation, but within that report, there was a gentleman by the name of Travis Miller, who owns a company by the name of Criterion Associates. He came in, and he is an expert in mapping, and he did, he did a couple, he ran a couple simulations, if you would. And at that time, it was thought that with these simulations, you know, that pin, or as he described it, or defined it to us, you throw a bunch of pins in the air, and this pin, one particular pin, defined the center of town as being the location that we're speaking of tonight. Now, that being said, you know, what does it do for us? I mean, I think it provides us with different deployment strategies, certainly. And some of you in the room may know something of, you know, something about NFPA compliance. You know, we, as a service, on average, we still, on average, we respond to our calls, and we meet the standards, the national standard, six to eight minutes. There has been discussion that, you know, perhaps we should locate one of our rescues to the northern part of the town. The busy, you know, one of the busier sections of town. Valley Falls being the busiest section of town. Now, if we go ahead and do that, keep in mind, we now have rescues traveling 11 to 12, maybe 13 minutes across town. Not very responsible from a deployment strategy, per se. This is something that, really, this plan is not something that we just came out with. And this location is not something that we came out with, and we just, you know, this wasn't brought about, you know, two, three months ago. We're talking about 2012, when Don Jacobs came into town, and he talked about a three-station model. He talked about an optimum three-station model. He talked about the center of town. The center of town being this location that we're speaking of tonight. And I understand that it's not a favorable location for many of you in the audience, and I respect your passion, I truly do. You know, and it's one of these things, you know, or one of these issues where we're talking about modifying facilities, or reconstructing, constructing new facilities, so that we can offer you a more efficient and effective public safety model. That's important. That's important to me, that's important to the members of the council, and it should be important to you. And I'm not saying tonight that it isn't, but what I'm saying is, we've put thought into this. We haven't been dismissive of the location. We haven't been dismissive of the passion associated with this location. You know, and Alexandra, I appreciate it. I have a 22-year-old son, you're 22 years of age, he's a passionate young man, and I embrace that, okay? I really do. The mayor has proposed that we put over 500 acres in a trust, not to be touched, for 20 years. Now, in 20 years, I'd like to be retired. I'd like to be enjoying my eight-year-old's life. Yeah, I think, yeah, well, we have an eight-year-old at home, and I'd like to be enjoying his life, and hopefully enjoying my grandchildren. But I want to make sure that during my tenure here, in the town of Cumberland, that we provide you with the best service, in the best service model, not only to include EMS, as we are a third entity within the town, but certainly to assure that our brothers in the fire service, we're all trained to provide you with the best service overall, within the state. You know, my background is just not, you know, administrative. You know, I've had the opportunity to be in front of a lot of people, educating them on EMS models, subjects that we're speaking about today. I own an EMS training institute, okay? In the process of becoming nationally accredited. That says something to who I am and our character. This is not a fly-by-night, this is not a whim. This is something that's important for the town. You know, for four years, I've known the mayor, and it disturbs me when I hear his integrity slammed. I've met with his family, I've golfed with his children, you know, he's a great guy. And I'm not saying that because he hired me. I can work anywhere, okay? But the fact of the matter is, is that every time we turn around, and every time we get into a meeting, he shows passion. He shows passion for this town, he grew up in this town. His father was an incredible asset to this town. The Boys Club, you know, a street named after him. We're looking for this to just be voted on. I mean, we're looking to make it better. We're looking to provide you, not with a better service, because we provide you with a good service. The police department provides you with an excellent service. We do our jobs, but we're looking to be more efficient. And if we can be more efficient, certainly we can be more effective. Training, together, in one building. An emergency operating center within one building. Centrally located administrative staff, certainly for EMS and police, is what we're speaking of now. The possibility of the fire district merging into this, you know, this project. Think about what we could build here for the future of this town. Think about that when we speak, you know, in November, and we, you know, present facts, as the mayor stated, and we're talking to our neighbors about what's going on here. Think about this evening, when we're talking about a vote, whether or not this question should be placed on the ballot. Be passionate. Be passionate about your future here in the town of Cumberland. I live in a neighboring town. I work here. I can be passionate about both towns. I'm passionate about this town, I'm passionate about the people that I work with, those who work with me, my colleagues in the rescue service. I don't consider them my, you know, consider being their boss, I consider them being my equals. Okay? We are passionate. We're a passionate human beings, and I, you know, I request that the council think about that, and certainly think about this, this is just a vote. This is not the end-all-be-all. We want this to become a question on a ballot. A question on a ballot. This is not a fly-by-night. This is something that we have thought about. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, member of the town council. I am here once again before you. And I'll just reiterate what Sean, Director Thompson, has touched upon. The police station, the original building was built in 1962. A second floor addition was put on in 1989. The police department has been nationally accredited, I believe in 2000. And I stand before you, informing you, that we will not meet our national accreditation in December because of our building. I have been cited by the fire department for not meeting fire code. The assessment team for national accreditation has been on our site numerous times. It has commented on the condition of our building. Commenting on, we use closets as office space. Commenting on our five furnaces, how we are not running efficiently and effectively, and you heard those buds words a little while ago. Last year, I believe during the summertime, my electric bill was $1,300 a month. When we embarked in looking at a centralized building for police rescue, and possibly fire, we looked at what is the benefit of the community? How can we, as a police department, a rescue department, and potentially a fire service, which is going to be combined into one entity, how can we provide a service for our community in the best way that we can? And you've heard Director Thompson outline a lot of what we discussed in these meetings, and I'm not gonna take too much of your time in reiterating that. But, you know, I have a vision for this complex, and this complex is truly for the community. I had made sure that we have a community room built into our facility, that the community can come to our facility and have their meetings. All too often, a lot of people only visit the police station when they have to pick up a report, an accident report, or they get arrested. And we want to change that. We want to make it better for our community. I wear two hats. I wear the hat as the police chief, and I also wear the hat as the emergency management director. And I'm tasked at that time for hurricanes and football visits, to bring all the town department heads together to see what we can do to make sure our community comes out of that storm properly. And right now, we have to meet on the second floor of our police station. What better opportunity to have a building where you have the police chief, the rescue director, and potentially the fire chief, all in one building, to make sure that we service our community? Currently, the state of Rhode Island has their accreditation, and we are not going to meet that. We have been nine, 12 years, once again, nationally accredited, and we're not going to meet that. On Tuesday of next week, I have to appear before the state fire board of appeals because of my building. I'll be honest with you, I don't know what I'm gonna tell them. I have no idea what I'm gonna tell them. Very little fire detection, zero fire suppression. That's what we're up to. I understand the passion, I truly do. And I know that I remain open to anything, to anyone with any type of information on how we can improve our service for the benefit of the community in town of Cumberland. Thank you, Chief. Once again, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Okay, next item is Resolution 1438A. Requesting the Rhode Island Secretary of State to place certain ballot questions on the November 4th, 2014 ballot. I'm not sure if everyone has been able to receive it. We have amended 1438A, so at this time, I entertain a motion to replace 1438 with 1438A. Council Murray moves to amend. Settle by Councilor Dwyer, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Are we going to have public input on this?
Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing them all in favor? Those against? Excuse me, please. We have a amendment. We're getting procedurally to where we need to be to have input from you, okay? And quite honestly, that one councilor is trying to act like he's the hero of the group, and that we, the rest of us, don't want to hear from you. All right, we're on the amendment. Excuse me, please. Let's keep this civil and let's keep it... Excuse me. Alexandra, do you have something you want to present? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, on the amendment. I thought we voted. All in favor on the amendment? Those opposed? Passes seven-nothing. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Councilman. We first of all wanted to address both the comments of Mayor McKee and the town planner, as well as the safety officials here. We... Can you all hear me? I'm sorry. No? It's pretty packed.
We can shift that. You can move it closer to you, yeah.
Okay, there we go. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Fantastic. We appreciate Mayor McKee's long history of protecting land and conserving land in this town. We don't question his history of protecting land in this town. We commend him for that. We question now why you would want to tarnish such an admirable record with going back on a conservation easement that you made, or that the Mr. Mayor made in 2004. Why would you want to tarnish such an admirable record? Secondly, we want to say thank you so much to all the safety officials that came out tonight. No one doubts your hard work. No one doubts your success. No one doubts your passion with this, but unfortunately, that's not the issue. The issue isn't, should we have a new safety facility? The issue is where that facility should be located. And again, we're going to prove tonight that there are certain legal questions regarding the location of this facility and that more work needs to be done to find an appropriate facility for our police and rescue services that are clearly working so hard to protect us.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
My name is Kim McCarthy. I'm a lawyer, a resident of the town for more than 30 years and a registered voter. Full disclosure, I am a member of the library board of trustees, but I'm not here in that capacity. I don't speak for the board of trustees, and they have taken no formal position on this matter. I'm here just in my capacity as a private citizen. And as Alex said, we're not here to talk about whether a public safety complex makes sense or where the best place is for it, only about whether there are legal restrictions that would prevent the town from doing what it appears to plan to do, amend the conservation easement to cite a public safety complex on the monastery land. And I've presented you each with a memorandum, a copy of the easement and a statute that indicates that, or not indicates, that proves that it is not permissible. The key legal issue is that the town cannot legally authorize building the public safety complex on the land that is looking to do so, and especially not through a resolution and a ballot vote. The current easement that's in effect expressly prohibits all of the activities and uses that would be required to build a public safety complex, subdivision of the land, removal of trees, clearing and grading of the land, and the building of any structures, asphalt driveways, or parking lots. That easement is enforceable even against the town, and if you look in the package that I gave you, you can see that Rhode Island general laws, Chapter 34-39, Section 1, provides that. So in order to build a public safety complex on that land, you would have to amend the conservation easement. I think the resolution already anticipates that and says that it's subject to amendment of the conservation easement. The problem is that apparently, I think Mayor McKee mentioned this in his remarks, people think that this town council has the authority to amend that easement on its own, but that's simply not the case. That's not the legal status of that easement. If you look in the easement, it's Section 7, Subparagraph 1. It specifically states that it's a conservation restriction under Rhode Island law. Conservation restrictions under Rhode Island law have an elevated legal status that is protected under Chapter 34, Section 39 of the general laws. It elevates a conservation restriction, such as the one that's been placed on this property, to a status similar to a charitable trust. Therefore, you have to do two things before you can amend the easement and build the public safety complex on that land. First, you'd have to prove that the land was either not useful or not usable for conservation purposes, as it was in 2004, that it doesn't protect any public interest to have the conservation restriction in place, that there are no publicly beneficial conservation purposes, or that the purposes expressed in the easement are no longer in effect. As far as I know, the same exact condition of the land that it was in in 2004, when the conservation easement was put into place, are still in effect now, 10 years later. I do not believe you could meet the standard in order to amend the easement. But even if you could meet the standard, in order to amend a conservation restriction under the statute, you have to file a suit, make the attorney general a party to that suit, and get a specific court order permitting the amendment. None of that seems to be contemplated here, neither the process itself nor the costs that would be involved. If you tried to amend the conservation easement without going through that process, the Rhode Island State Attorney General has the power, it's in the statute, to enforce the conservation restriction against the town. If he won, the town would have to pay his legal fees. There may be other legal issues as well. I'm not sure. I don't know if there are environmental issues. I don't know if there are election-related issues, but I think that this issue is a roadblock to pursuing this plan. So therefore, both the resolution and the ballot question are either authorizing an unauthorized action or moot, because you cannot do what you intend to do. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What is it that you, what is your, what is it that you think the resolution does?
I'm talking about the citing of the project on the land.
The resolution requests the Secretary of State place a question on the ballot and for the voters, and for the voters to vote on it.
To authorize the town to cite the public safety complex on the land, to authorize the town to do something it is not authorized to do. I just don't see the point.
So you don't think that the question should be put on the ballot at all?
I don't. I don't think the town, it doesn't matter if the town voters authorize the town council to do this, because the town council cannot do this.
Well, if that's the case, then they'll be prohibited from doing it.
I suppose that's true, but why go through the exercise? Why go through the exercise of having the voters vote on something that doesn't, that they can't even do? I guess the point is...
Because what we have is two competing interests here, okay? We have the issue of the public safety...
Oh, no, I don't think, I'm sorry, if I could, I don't, this is not a competition between public safety and conservation. It is not, and I think what we're really saying is, take some time, review the statute, determine whether you have the authority, and if not, where is a better place to cite it, then figure out where to cite it, as opposed to going to the, to the voters, asking them to cite it on a place that is simply not available.
Mr. Heffner?
Mr. President, I went through this, the last meeting, and I'll go through it again. I was not aware that the people here would be represented by council, so I haven't objected to anything. I speak as a conservationist, an outdoor person myself. I don't speak as a politician, so I can say what I want in a nice way. What I said the last meeting, the real issue here is, does this referendum question go on the ballot? If the majority, not the council, not the council, not all the people here, if all of the people in the town of Cumberland vote to do this, the majority of the people vote positive for this referendum, then, then we go to the step which my sister is just mentioning. So we have a situation, is the cart in front of the horse or the horse in front of the cart? If the referendum question gets turned down, it's all over. If it gets approved, then what the town council has to do is take certain steps to amend the conservation plan. And let me go through this. I didn't interrupt anybody, so if you could just give me a couple of seconds. Excuse me. The ordinance that was passed that prevented future buildings, roadways, et cetera, 28-27, was passed on September 1st, 2004. Wow, it was already amended on May 10th, 2007, yet there was no outcry at that point. The conservation and management plan that was adopted that we're speaking of was passed on October 20th, 2004. Shortly after that, the conservation easement and restrictive amendments was filed in the land evidence records. Now, what does that do? It keeps us from doing anything at this point other than what it says. However, in the conservation easement and restrictions that was recorded, it's subject to future amendment of the management plan, the conservation and management plan. Now, what we're talking, my sister's talking about, under the general laws, there's a difference between the town acquiring land that has restrictive covenants on it at the time as a grantee we took light... Can you hear me back there?
I hear you.
Okay, Representative McLachlan, can you hear me? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate it. We've got two situations. If the town took, took land from a grantor, and they had restrictive covenants, restrictive easements, et cetera, in there, then we're dealing with what my sister's talking about. In this particular case, the town itself imposed its own restrictions. So where does that leave us? In my opinion, we can take whatever steps that we need to do, but let's assume we have to go and comply with the law, all right? You know, I really take exception to this.
I don't think, I don't think that came out the way he wanted it to.
I speak the truth. I don't, I don't hold any punches, okay? So just listen to me for a minute.
Please.
Just listen to me for a minute, okay? In order to, in order to go through and get, if you had a piece of property you bought with a restriction on it from Partier, you would have to go under Title 39, Chapter 20, 34-39, and go through the procedure that my sister has explained. However, that also references 42-2-5, and that says that the town, with the permission of the attorney general, with the permission of the court, can move by future town council action to amend it. So what we've got is this. I agree with everything that's been represented. We will have to do that if this referendum passes. What's before this council tonight is, should we let the people, all the people, vote and not just the people that are here? That's fair. Nobody's getting anything for nothing. We still have to go through everything that my sister just mentioned.
Can I respond with this?
Sure, but I have a question for you, too, when you're done.
I'll take your question.
All right, now, I'm not sure what, if that law applies or not. I just kind of started looking at it today after I talked to Alexandra, and I haven't had a chance to read the 20-page memo.
It's a four-page memo.
All right, four, I'm sorry. You told me it was 20.
It has attachments.
All right. Okay, now, so my question is, if your position is as you stated, does that prevent the town from taking the 515 acres and transferring it to Independent Nature Conservancy?
It doesn't prevent that, and that may provide extra protections, but this easement is in perpetuity, and I understood that the transfer to the land trust was for 20 years. So this easement, as it's in effect now, is already a perpetual restriction. So a couple of things I just want to respond to.
That assumes that it can't be amended.
Right, and I think, but I think that's, before you bring this question to the voters, I think the town council needs to know the answer to that question, because if it can't be amended, there's no reason to move forward with this, and maybe this hasn't come up before and you haven't considered it, but maybe you should before you go any further. So two things. The law that we're citing does not just apply to land acquired that already has an easement on it, and it specifically applies to this easement because this easement says it does. It's in chapter, it's in Section 7, Number 1. It says it's, this conservation easement is and shall be deemed to be a conservation restriction under Rhode Island law. If you look at the title of the statute I gave you, it's conservation restrictions. Okay, so there's no question that it applies.
I think we're having a kind of a two-pronged, it's like both ends of the debate of the same question. I mean, you're arguing that we shouldn't put it on the ballot and let the voters decide whether we have to go through the procedures before we actually build, if it's approved, whatever legally has to be done would have to be done, including amending the ordinances, if there's a process that has to go through, and then site plan work, subdivision work, whatever, all of that would have to be done. I don't disagree with you. So you're, you're taking the position that...
Well, my argument is a little bit different, because like I said, there are two, two parts of things you have to go through. There's the process, which Mr. Heffner said that he agrees that we would have to go through, but then there's the standard, and I think what you need to do is have maybe the council and your legal council determine, can you meet the standard? The fact that the management plan, it says it's subject to amendment to the management plan, really doesn't matter, because there's a separate section that says prohibited uses, and it says that there are specific, there are expressly prohibited uses, and that even though you can use the land later, you reserve the right to yourself to use this land later, you can't use it for any purpose inconsistent with the conservation easement. There are a list, and I've already mentioned them, subdivision of the land, removal of trees, grading, building any buildings, and building any parking lots, doing any paving. That's expressly and specifically prohibited. There's no way that you're going to be able to do that unless you can prove, meet my standard that I mentioned, not my standard, the law's standard, that says that you have to prove that this is no longer used or useful for conservation purposes. I don't think that you can meet that standard. That's something you should know before you put this on the ballot.
I think it's something we should know before we actually authorize the building, once the public votes yes or no. We don't, I mean...
I see where you're coming from. I don't understand why you would ask people to authorize something that is not permissible under law. That's illegal. I don't understand why you would do that.
Yes, Tom.
So what we're, what we're asking for then, what they're asking for, let's put this off another two years before we can move forward with the police and fire. Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, okay? It's what you, what you decide for it. Before you is, do the voters of this town want to consider this? If they do, fine. Then we go and we do everything we've just been talking, not everything, I agree with some of it. If it's denied, then we, we know right away, then the chief and the rescue director have to go out. We have to find someplace else to buy, and the taxes go on.
All right, please, can we keep it? Can we keep it civil, please? Thank you, ma'am. Yelset, thank you.
I'm happy to answer them. I think the positions are fairly well-stated and...
Well, thank you for your work, and I will, I will read your memo and...
Oh, and I just wanted to clarify with you. I don't, I'm a member of the Monastery Preservation Alliance. They didn't hire me to represent them.
That's fine. Thank you. They're lucky to have you.
So I just wanted to highlight from that, we know that this, it's an issue. We need a, we need new public safety facilities. Why would this council authorize a vote on only one site that is almost, not even almost, it's going to be turned down under law? If this is so important, which it is, why wouldn't you do the work now to find other sites? So that we can... So if we, if we allow the people other options to vote on or to consider, then we can move forward, and it speeds up the process, because you don't have to go through that process of going through legal, legal... of going through legal, legal, legal action that you're almost surely to lose.
That would be up to the courts, or, you know, if, if, even if it gets approved...
But again, that, but again, that question delays the building of the...
Because I haven't had time to really review the issue that was raised this afternoon at 4 o'clock, but I will.
No, and we appreciate that.
And before, if I'm here, when the work has to be done, whatever's required by law will be done, but if the voters say no, then none of that has to be done. It's the same argument, only it's flipped over.
I understand that, but I'm saying...
We're not disagreeing that we have to comply with the law if the voters approve it.
I understand that, but I'm saying...
You're saying, don't put it on the ballot, you're, don't put it on the ballot until you comply with the law.
We're saying it's useless to put it on the ballot, since it's illegal. And since this public safety issue...
All right, we can't have people shouting out, okay? This is a large crowd, this is a meeting, this is a public meeting, people speak one at a time. All right.
I'm saying, since this is such a public, a strong public safety issue, we should consider other options now, so that we can get the police and rescue services in a new facility and not have to go through this long, drawn-out process.
Your statement presumes that the other options have not been examined. I think that the testimony from Public Safety was the opposite of that.
My statement does presume that, because no traffic study has been done of the area, no environmental impact study has been done on the area, there's a natural gas pipeline that has not been considered, you haven't done a testing of the soil to test the ledge and see how that will affect the residential area across the way. In your statements to me, Mr. Higgins, you've said that you don't believe that it will impact that, but what I'm saying is you haven't had experts on soil, the environment, the traffic, actually study these things.
Right.
So your, your opinions are not based on any fact, they're just that, opinions.
I have no opinion. What I, what I, what we're considering is whether to let the voters decide the issue, and your group can have their campaign and advocate against the question for whatever, you know, whatever valid reason there is, but for, you're arguing that we should spend a lot of money on consultants and economic studies and environmental studies, before, before the voters even say they're interested in citing this on this site. That, to me, doesn't make any sense.
I'm asking that you save the voters of Cumberland the money that it will cost to fight this legal battle, which you're almost sure to lose.
Well, that's assuming that there is a legal battle, so that'll be up to you, I guess. If and when, once the voters approve it, then you're entitled to invoke whatever rights you think you have legally, and nobody, nobody questions that.
I also wanted to, just before I end my statement, I'd just like to propose, I spoke to you about this, Mr. Higgins, in our phone call this afternoon when I asked permission to speak.
Can the public safety people hear? Can you hear? All right, go ahead. She wants to propose some other sites.
Well, you specifically stated that the, that Ms. McCarthy's proposal was 20 pages long, just to clarify what I was referring to, is I have this list, it's 20 pages long, and it has about 45 sites on each page. It's a list of all the property the town of Cumberland currently owns, it's 20 pages long. I'm saying, don't say that this is the only site available when you haven't thoroughly considered other options by consulting experts. Obviously, no one is denying that there is a need for updated safety facilities, and neither myself nor the Monastery Preservation Alliance seeks to, to call, what is it, Mary McKee said, to accuse the chief of police to, of conspiring to ruin the monastery, that is not our point of view at all. We respect the chief of police, we respect Director Thompson, we respect the need for this. We're arguing about the site, and we're saying, because there's such a strong need for this, do your homework and do your work and find the best spot that's going to please everyone, that's going to be legal, and that's going to be most suitable for the issue. Thank you.
Just to, I just want to clarify that nobody's saying that, I believe that you are saying that as the representative of this group, but there have been letters written to the editor that have appeared in the paper, and there have been comments posted that have done that.
But none of those were under the Monastery Preservation Alliance.
Well, they're anonymous, so we don't know who they're from.
I just want to make that absolutely clear, since I'm the only one being called out in the audience for this, so I wanted to make it absolutely...
Well, I didn't say that, uh, well...
I was addressed twice prior to coming up.
You're the representative of the group, I assume, so the reason I went to you first is because we did speak earlier today.
No, I understand.
And you are the representative of this group.
No, me, there's more than one.
Okay, hold on, I didn't say she was going to be the only one to speak, but we were here, like, what, 10 days ago? And we heard a lot of what, repeats of what she's already said, so you're here in mass numbers, we recognize that.
And there's many more.
Okay? Now, there was a woman standing up in the back.
Thank you very much, Council.
Yeah, thank you, yes, come forward. Please state your name.
My name is Marilyn Ross.
Where do you live?
I live on Anthony Drive.
Okay.
And I don't know that much about how these things work, so I have a question, and my question is, can the question of whether to build a facility be put on the ballot without a location, location to be determined later? We desperately need the facility, I could even be convinced that that might be the right spot, I'm not convinced of it at the moment. I also think that a promise to not build anything else there for 20 years would be too short a time, 20 years is nothing. Can we separate these issues, deal with one that can go forward now and go to the people, and work on the other one some more before we bring it to the people?
There would wait two years before there would be any consideration of this parcel. All we're asking is for the voters to be able to give their input on this parcel. We're not constructing the building, we're not authorizing the construction of the building, we're not authorizing the architect and the design, we're just authorizing a ballot question, and between now and November, it'll be up to the public safety representatives and the advocates to convince you that that, that the work has been done to consider the sites, and keep in mind that there was some, a testimony that we had a consultant who kind of, it just came out during the course of the fire consolidation consultant, that there was a need to relocate these other two departments. So that was already done by a professional public safety official, or retired public safety official. Now, they have their opportunity to convince you, and this group has their, and their other, and the other people in the town have their opportunity to convince you, all I'm asking is for it to be debated, and I think something good has already come out of this, and that no matter what legal position you take, because nobody knows for sure until it ends up in court. I mean, there's been some, I've been told that because of the town owns the easement, they can change it, whatever's in the easement can be changed, the ordinance certainly can be changed, okay? And if anything good's already come out of this, it's that this property, which none of us, not the mayor, not me, not any councilman, not the chief, not the rescue director, ever had any intention of developing further, and that property would be protected, you say 20 years isn't enough, it's, it could be more than we have now, but, and I wouldn't have a problem with 50.
But if at the time we...
I wouldn't have a problem with 50 years either, if that's what comes up, but they're working with DEM, by the way, who I'm presuming knows what the state laws are, and, you know, to get to that point before the ballot comes up, question comes up. And if you're not convinced that this site is the best site, or that this site should be used, then vote no.
Well...
It's the law.
It's, excuse me, that's, that is a question of contention in this whole debate.
But if we take a vote now...
If it's the law, then we can't give 515 acres to the Lake Nature Conservancy, if that's the law.
But are we not better off? My, my worry is that people will vote yes or no, based completely on emotional reaction.
That's why there's two questions.
We need, how will you be disseminating information about your progress in investigating the legality and what we would need to do to use that site?
That would be, as much as we can, certainly, I think it's, it's to the advantage of the public to have as much information as possible, but if the voters vote no, then there's no need to go through all that work and expense.
But if the voters vote yes and think it's going to happen, and they've just done a good thing for their town, and then I found out that the homework wasn't done on finding out if the site could be available, that's no better.
But we're in the same position we would be in if they vote no. Really are.
Well, if they want to vote yes, you're offering them something that they can't actually have, or you can't promise...
If they want, if they don't want it on the monastery, they can vote yes, you were, there's, we've already put a second, first question on the ballot, authorizing the borrowing for the construction of the building. So, if they want, if they don't want it on the monastery, but they think that we need the public safety building, they can vote to authorize the town to borrow that money, and at that point, the town would have to find, if there's another site, I mean, this has been going on for two or three years.
But if it goes on the ballot now, how will people reading the ballot know that approving that site is pending getting legal use to use it?
I think that there'll be plenty of publicity on it. All right? Anybody, what, yeah, all right, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope I don't get myself into any trouble here, I know I'll go somewhere. I've been on the Land Trust Board for 13 years now, and I'm not speaking for the Land Trust except for one, one confirmation, that is, that first slide that Josh put up about all the acreage that the mayor has been involved with, the Land Trust has worked behind the scenes unbeknownst to the average citizen on all those acquisitions, and the mayor has a passion for open space, but unlike the Land Trust, the Land Trust only has one mission, preservation of open space. So we're running one business, and you have to appreciate the fact that the mayor is running multiple businesses, he's running everything, him and his staff, his counselors and so forth. So you've got to keep an open mind, now, everybody sitting here supporting, don't take 10 acres out of the monastery, there's equal or maybe more members of the public that are afraid to speak up, because you guys are so organized, they don't want to stand up against you. So, they're not organized, so you're not hearing much about them, okay? But I've talked to a lot of people, and, and there's a lot of people that are in favor of the citing it on the monastery. Forget the legal things, I'm not speaking to that, but I think putting it on the ballot is makes a lot of sense, the lady that previously was up here, I like her idea of not being site-specific, to say, let's, let's acquire some land, it doesn't have to necessarily be the monastery, it may be something of a compromise down the road. But another word I wanted to throw into the mix here is integrity, and I've worked with the mayor, I've worked with his staffs, I've worked with the town council people, and a lot of our board members have, and the highest amount of integrity has always come out of this office. So a lot of people don't know the mayor and how he operates, but I'll vouch for the mayor on integrity. Now, I'm speaking for the Land Trust to say that we participate in a lot of stuff. Now personally, I don't have a position right now, but between now and ballot time, I expect to have one. I'm, I'm on, I'm on both sides of the fence right now, but I think, you know, maybe the compromise has to come into the mix. So I just wanted to say that you've got to keep an open mind, don't just stay in a biotic position of, there's no other way to go but protect that 525 acres, so give it a, give it a chance and think about all the aspects of the proposal, forgetting the legal stuff, let these two attorneys find out. So, that's my statement.
Thank you, Joe. The gentleman way in the back. Yes? Hmm? Angel Road?
Edwin Haisler, 171 Angel Road. One of the issues that involves this that hasn't been discussed at all is the access road that they want to put from this proposed facility through my land so they can get out on Angel Road. I've been approached by the planners, they want to talk about the planning process, a planner came up my driveway one time thinking it led all the way to the monastery. This is on the planning, whether you people want to admit it or not.
I'm not aware of that, but Mayor, do you want to address that?
I would confirm that there was an approach, but I also would confirm that we understand that the land is not for sale, and we've dismissed that issue.
They can't just, we're not going to take your land by eminent domain just to create a second exit into the, that wouldn't even pass muster legally.
You don't want to pay me the $12 million, $500,000...
Hello? One of the things I want to emphasize is that...
Is that etched in stone that you, you're not planning on taking it by eminent domain?
It is in my mind, and I'm only one vote, but it is in my mind.
We have no, like I said, I confirm...
I don't even think that would pass muster legally.
I confirm the approach, but we, but we've dismissed that based on the owner's right prerogative, which is, you know, his prerogative, so that's...
And keep in mind that the actual 10 acres has not, we've given you a general area, and we've told you where we don't want to go, there's wetlands on that parcel as well, so that can't be gone, gone there. Will be determined through a council vote if we can go forward with the 515-acre conservation easement, which would be done before November now, you know, unless it's absolutely possible, it would be my position that this 10 acres should not affect the view of any property owners that surround the monastery, except the post office and Dave's Market and the bank.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've already had some of the first councils, so, way in the back, you ma'am? Yep, you? I don't know who that is. Please identify yourself and say, give us your address, then...
Sure, Pam Mercier, 51 Cook Road.
What?
51 Cook Road.
Cook, okay.
Yep. My question is really more about the wording of the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, it says to, to build on a site purchased in 1972, and I wonder if perhaps we could put the monastery in there, so that it's not just kind of for people who don't possibly read the entire resolution while they're standing in there?
I'll read you what the ballot question would be.
Sure. The bold part is the part that I'm questioning.
The part that's going on the ballot that they're going to have to vote on, the whereas's it don't mean anything.
Just the bold part is the part that I'm talking about.
Shall the Cumberland Town Council, this is the asking the voters, yes or no, approve or reject, authorize construction of a public safety building on town-owned land located on Diamond Hill Road across from the U.S. Post Office, which is a portion of a Sessors Platte 22 Lot 8, Sessors Platte 22 Lot 8, I believe, has 163 acres, hold on.
Yep.
Not to exceed 10 acres, said building to be built in an area north of the power lines which begin at Lynch Park, which by the way, I wasn't aware is owned by the town, within the town continuing to preserve the remaining 515 acres of land otherwise known as the monastery.
Right, can you read to me again the part that's actually in bold now, like I was saying?
I don't know what you're referring to.
There's a section that was in bold on the Secretary of State's resolution.
That's the title of the resolution.
Oh, that's the title, so the whole thing will appear...
No, no, just that what I read you will be on the question.
Will be on the question.
Yes.
So there's not a section in bold at the top, and then the description underneath?
No.
Nope? Okay.
And if, if the... And if the council feels it's appropriate, and I asked for the change to be referred to the monastery because I wanted it to be clear.
I'd like the monastery a little further up in the, if you're going to put the resolution on, I'd like to see it further up.
This monastery property is a lot larger than some people are aware of, first of all. I mean, I've had people...
I'm aware of the size of the monastery.
Yeah, well, some people are and some people aren't. I mean, not everyone's lived in town for 40 years.
I understand that.
And I'm not trying to, but I would be open if a member of your suggestion, if the council felt was appropriate, to insert town-owned land located on the monastery property on Diamond Hill.
Something like that would be excellent.
I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. Are you the attorney? Is there anyone else from the public? I mean, I know you're from the public, but you've already gotten a chance to speak, so...
I actually wanted to respond to something you said.
Just now? All right, I'll come back to you, but I want to let the public speak. Yes, who's that? Is that Deborah? Deborah, come up.
Hi, Mr. Higgins, or should I say President Higgins and the council? Okay. Number one, I'm here to stress a few things. One, the comprehensive plan of 2004 set for the monastery not developed yet. That's in the comprehensive plan that we're renewing right now. So with that being said, you know, I don't know what's going to be on the comprehensive plan that we have to renew by 2016 in regards to the monastery. The other thing is, we did have a traffic flow study done when Columbia Gas Station was trying to remodel their facilities with the car wash and retail store, which they've, I guess, delayed. We got a rating of a D for our traffic flow study at Chapel 4 Corners. So I just wanted to mention all that, and I know we do have a comprehensive meeting in August. So if anybody wants to have a little bit more input on this, attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman in the back. No, you have to come forward, sir. But this is being videotaped and everyone wants to be able to hear you. Please state your name.
George Loug, 185 Staples Road.
How do you spell your last name?
L-O-U-G-H.
Thank you.
I have a question.
We'll try to answer it.
The parcel land which is proposed to be taken is about 10 acres, if I understand correctly.
What's proposed is taking a portion, how much, do you have the yardage, the acreage on Platte 22 Lot 8? It's in the 100 acres, right? I think it's over 100 acres. So out of that, one parcel, which there's several on the property, if the voters approve or if we can give the rest of it away to the conservation forever or for 20 years or 25 years, whatever this council and the mayor and the DM decide, then this 10 acres would be located in that one parcel.
Well, I can see on the map, and I have not looked at the land specifically, so this is a question, really. Does this not cut off the area to the north monastery land, which is a fairly large area from the rest of the monastery?
What do you mean by cut off, sir?
Well, if you go in those power lines here, you take a strip of land there, you have another piece of land up here, part of it is on Angel Road.
Yeah, that's...
Which is not, no longer going to be contiguous to the rest of the monastery property. Is that not correct?
Well, there would be a public safety building in the middle of the property that they could still go through if that was people's choice of access to this, to the monastery. And one of the things that DMs brought up in conversations with the mayor is while there are maybe trails there of an unofficial nature, that are either paths that have been worn out, because I mean, I used to cut through there when I was a kid, there's nothing official. And one of the things that is being discussed is if it's allowed, under all the laws that affect this, is improving access to the monastery from a location where people can park in the police station parking lot, well-lit, 24/7 mandate coverage. And it would certainly be a shorter walk to Nine Man's Misery than it is from where the library is. But that's up to the...
But this, in effect...
But if you live on Angel Road, all right? You live, you don't live on Angel Road, do you?
No.
All right. But whatever the 10 acres is, is the only thing that will be, we're not even going to use 10 acres at first to build on. I don't think, I think it's two maybe? If the voters approve it, let me again, if the voters approve, the use of the land. So your question is, will it cut off access to, from Angel Road?
No.
No, all right.
My question was, would this not effectively separate two parcels of monastery land from each other, so you no longer have one contiguous area?
It would separate 10 acres of one parcel, that's...
But then there's an area to the north of that, which would not be connected to what's to the south of it, from where I can see the map.
Mr. Hapner, or Joshua, can you help?
No, this Platte, it will still be Platte 22 Lot 8, it will have the safety complex or safety building on it, you'll still have access from the south to the north. It's not going to totally block off from east to west to prevent people from going through. We're going to build new trails through that, so it will not do what you're concerned about.
That's the Angel Road property? I don't understand the term "cut off." Mr. Hapner? Can we please keep, can we keep the noise down, please?
I think if you look at the map of where the approximate 10 acres is located, it looks like for some reason there's going to be a separate lot carved out. And that's what this gentleman's concern was. In fact, what's going to happen, the safety building will be built on approximately 10 acres of that area, but there's also been testimony that the town will create new trails that will come from the south through the north, through that side of that property. It's not going to cut everybody off of Angel Road.
This proposed lot is not going to touch the back line of the property, and it's not even going to be close to it. So there would be continued access to the main portion of the monastery. Yes, Mrs., come up. Dorian. Mrs. Currie?
Doris, I'm sorry. First, I'm going to get in trouble for speaking, but I'm speaking.
With who?
With my daughter. First, I'd like to say, no one is questioning the mayor's integrity. My daughter comes from the mayor's youth commission. The mayor turned to her many a time for questions about the school. Okay? She has respect for the mayor. And I know that there's been things out there that have been said, okay? And to preserve our monastery has been nothing but above board about what we've said and publicly stated.
I totally agree.
And I would just like the mayor to know that my daughter has the ultimate respect for you and that this is something that she has done because she chooses to do it and she has a great passion for the monastery. We're not questioning your integrity. I want that to be just placed out there.
And I think, I think the mayor kind of referred to that and what he said was, was that he's not talking about this group or your daughter.
I understand.
But there are other political leaders or people...
And that's political.
Who have attached to this issue and people are writing letters to the editor...
I understand that.
And so forth, that have been negative.
And I've literally gone door-to-door with petitions and I've been asked questions right off the bat.
Sure.
Who has signed the petition? Who hasn't signed the petition? Who should I vote for? Who shouldn't I vote for? Those are questions I get when I go door-to-door. I'm not going to lie, if somebody signed the petition, I'm going to say they signed the petition. If they didn't, I'm going to say they didn't. Okay? But I'm just saying that that is not the mission of what we're trying to do. And my question, I have a question, is ultimately, if, this is so important, and it is important, I believe that we need a new police station, I firmly believe that we need these things, okay? If this is so important, why would the town council, why would anybody, would anybody, just logically, anybody, take a chance on the fact that this is going to get turned down by the voters, this location, okay? And you have to start all over again? Doesn't that delay the process for a new police department and a new fire department and everything else? Doesn't that make the chief of police have to go in front of people and say, I'm sorry, but the voters said no, we have to start all over again? I don't understand that as just a person voting and as a constituent of, you know, people from different districts. I don't understand if this is so important to the town, and you've proven that with the chief of police and with, you know, the rescue services, why would you take a chance? I don't, I don't, I don't understand. It's just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Thank you. Mr. Hapner?
One final point. This question did not have to go on the ballot or on the referendum in the first place. This mayor had no malice at all and put it there so the people could know what we were doing. In my legal opinion, we could proceed with this without this referendum being on the ballot. We can proceed because we imposed the restrictions and covenants, we did not have them imposed by somebody we purchased the property from. I disagree with council that has another opinion, and the mayor put this on so everyone would know what was going on and so that all the voters in this town, including myself who lives way up north, would have the right to say yes or no. Not just a few people, not just the council. This is for a referendum for all the people, it didn't have to be on there at all. And he's not going to say that, or other people aren't going to say that, but that's why it was put on. It's caused all this controversy. It's not even needed. That's how upfront this guy is.
Mr. Weller? Vice Chairman Mutter? You've had so many hats, I don't know what to call you. Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. While we have you here, and I know you hate this kind of thing, I know you're not running for reelection, I want you to accept our thanks for all the work you've done for the town.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm just going to clarify, you know, my position. If, back in 2004, when we were fortunate enough, or I was fortunate enough to have a majority of the council on unanimous vote actually support the legislation that is kind of guiding this discussion tonight, I'm not sure who's right as far as the legal point, but as a legislator, that's important to me. Because if in fact, the legislation that we did enact in 2004 is as ironclad as it potentially is, we'd be proud of that. So, and I think as you gentlemen are aware, I mean, as legislators, when you work to get something passed, you'd like it to stay. But I was always a tad uncomfortable, not with the intent, but that we did it on a Wednesday night and the resolution, basically, the ordinance had to go through two public hearings, but the resolution was something that got posted on Friday and voted on Wednesday night. And there were a handful of people there that evening, certainly not the group that is present tonight. But that being said, and I probably should have gone back to the people who were on the council at the time, because if in fact, that's what we did, we'd be, we'd be really happy about that, I think, or I know I would, but I don't know. And so just to clarify my position, I hate to see two constituencies with honorable initiatives at each other, which is what's happening here. And so, in absence of being sure that the rest of the property was protected, a move to create a conservation easement with multiple entities that did that is better than what I thought I had led in 2004. And so, I certainly would not look at any initiative that would protect 495 acres, whether it be for 20 years or longer, I would be appreciative of that.
515, but that's...
Maybe it's 495, but 515 is even better. But, you know, but then again, you know, if it's airtight, I like that too. But, so that's where my position is, in that in fact, if this location, and this is similar to what Mrs. Ross I think was speaking to, if this location was in the best interest of public safety for the community and would enhance response times or potentially save somebody's life, for me to protect an ordinance that I got passed in 2004 doesn't measure up. So I just want to clarify my position, because I'm sure there are some who, you know, look at that as well, like selling out from 2004, but that's not the case. And, you know, you've got a tough decision there because I don't know if in fact, the legal answer is that you could never build anything there, why would you ask the question? Seems like a valid point to me. I guess in absence of certainty on that, that's what you have to wrestle with. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware and like I say, for those of the council on 2004, if that ends up, and I can't take credit for it either because that was not, that legislation was written by Katia Balasiany and certainly not me, but at my behest. So if that stands in perpetuity, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask you a question?
Mr. Mutter, would you respond to a question from the council? Council Lambie?
Yes, yes, I will.
So a lot of times when you're interpreting a law, the intent of the law is also important. So I want to hear from you firsthand, Jeff. Mr. Mutter, what was the intent of the law? Because it seems as though when you read the ordinance and you read the concept, the easement and also the management plan, it seems as though the intent was to prevent any structures, any expansion of buildings or asphalt building on that property at all. So I just want to, was that the intent of what was drafted back then?
I remember the phone call like it was yesterday and Ms. Balasiany asked me, you know, what the intent was. The intent was that nothing would ever be built on that property.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
But that was, you know, just to be fair, and Mr. Mutter referred to this, that was 10 years ago. His intent was 10 years ago, never to build on it. And he's now pointed out the question the voters will be pondering. Has anything changed in 10 years, especially related to the need for the public safety building, the fact that this is municipal property, that justifies a yes vote? If you don't think anything has changed, then vote no. All we're asking is for a vote. Mr. Nobrega, and then you, sir. You, I don't know your name, so...
My name is Tony Nobrega and I sat on that council with Jeff. Jeff was the chairman of that council then, and like Jeff, I remember it like it was yesterday. Mr. Lambie, we were getting beat on to have things built on the monastery back at that time also. That's why all of this was put together and I believe, as Jeff did then and now, that nothing should be built on the monastery property.
Good man.
But if I may, for this council, I also believe you should put before the voters.
Thank you, Mr. Nobrega, yes. Yes, come up. Please state your name and address.
Anna Mercier, Cook Road. Mercier, yes. My only question is, I'm slightly concerned, if there, we've heard from multiple sides of the argument, if there is the intent of the law designed, whether it's four years ago or if the status of the property hasn't changed, we can reasonably assume 10 years from now. If we've heard that the legal status of this land is currently undevelopable and that it would need a vote by the Rhode Island population, not just the Cumberland population, to amend the laws that make it, so what is the purpose of putting the vote... to amend the laws that make it, so, what is the purpose of putting the vote on the ballot to, almost in a sense, not intentionally, mislead voters into thinking that something can get accomplished that will have significant legal roadblocks in the future? That's my question.
Well, those are things that have been stated, I mean, during the course of the last two or three weeks, that these are issues that would need to be addressed. If, in fact, that is the case, they would need to be addressed before any shovel hit the ground. But the question is, shall the public indicate whether they're even open to taking 10 acres or building on 10 acres of this property?
10 acres that are undeveloped?
No, it's, there's no indication that the, did you say undevelopable?
Yes. Cannot be subdivided, as Ms. McCarthy had said.
I'm not, I don't agree with that, that position, but, I mean, I don't know if I agree with it. I don't have, I didn't have enough time to research that question.
Okay.
If it's true that the easement can't be changed without going through some sort of court procedure, then if the voters vote yes, then that would be done, if it is feasible economically, because there's a cost associated any time we go to court. If the voters vote yes, and a group of residents want to pursue a legal challenge to that vote, they could do that as well, and that, of course, would result in the town having the liability. But the question is, everyone is asking, why are we asking the public to vote? We're asking the public to vote because we recognize, in this town, and you recognize, that this is a very important piece of property in this town. Everybody recognizes that. This is a beautiful piece of property, but when it was purchased, it was partially purchased for municipal use, okay? Now, over the course of 30, 40 years, the property has taken on sacred status, especially in the view...
Well, that's an opinion.
Especially in the view of the environmental groups, you know? Because it is a beautiful property.
In addition to legal groups and economic groups, as well as the general public.
What economic groups?
Well...
What legal groups?
What legal groups? The legal groups that have been...
This is a one attorney, she's not a group.
That's all right.
She's been hired to represent this preservation.
Oh, that is false.
Well, she's been, I didn't say you were getting paid, but you...
That's the definition of hired.
Whatever. It's semantics.
There's a significant difference.
Please. What? I don't understand why, but go ahead. Yes, sir, go ahead. This isn't personal, people.
My question is simply, or if it is not a question, if it is, as you formally indicated, going to be on the ballot...
Yeah. Well, that'll be up to the council, whether they vote for it.
Well, I was just referencing what you said, you know, a few minutes ago.
But if we don't vote to put it on the ballot...
Right.
And the mayor decides, or the next mayor decides, that he wants to, he's going to go forward anyway, okay? And he has a council that's in support of him, then the people don't get to issue their say other than through meetings like this.
I would just like to see the general public understand the issue. I don't feel that the referendum aptly describes the situation, especially with the legal challenges that have been posed.
Thank you. Lady in the back with the black glasses, that you?
I don't know your name.
You, man.
My name's Stevie Magman, and I live on Rowland Street, and I just want to start by saying, you're saying this is not personal, but I don't think all of these people would be showing up and matching t-shirts if this wasn't personal to them. That's my first point.
I meant personal in a sense that it was, we were trying to insult you.
But in a sense, you are.
There's a difference between, I'm not even...
I know you don't understand, but to some, like this, the monastery was my childhood. It is very personal to me that you want to build on a place where I made forts as a little kid and where I grew up and made friends. And I realize that it is very important that we do have these public safety facilities, and I do realize that we need them, but I do think there are other places you could put it, than a place where you even said yourself is now a sacred, it's a sacred place to people. And it is personal to some of us.
I think you're not understanding...
I don't think we'd be here if it wasn't.
I don't think you were understanding what I was trying to say, but thank you.
Just because I'm young doesn't mean I don't understand you, sir.
Please, I can't hear you.
I said, just because I'm young does not mean I don't understand you.
Again, you're turning my words into some sort of insult for you.
You have been turning everyone's words all night.
I have not.
No offense, okay.
I haven't said hardly anything.
But my real reason for coming up here was questions that...
This is why we want to put this vote to a vote, because it's getting personal.
Well, my real reason for coming up here was not about putting this on the ballot or whatever, but I have curious questions as to, has it been put into blueprints or anything?
No.
About what this building, so we have no idea how much of an inconvenience of traffic this could make for Chapel 4 Corners, which already has a D rating for traffic. This could make matters even worse. What happens when it's like that, and now, now we have someone who needs emergency safety, who needs EMS, who now has to go through a one-way detour and can't get there because their rescue is stuck in 20 minutes of traffic from you building on a major road such as Angel Road, or against Diamond Hill?
Thank you. Shaun, do you want to address that? Thank you for your comment. Keep in mind that, well, I'm not even going to say this, but go ahead.
What can you say?
No, this is a resolution, all right? We're seeking input from the public because it's an important issue, but the public hearing isn't required technically. But go ahead.
So, in reference to, I understand that no formal study has been done, or traffic study has been done by us on this project, so to speak. However, you know, in, to answer the question referencing traffic, I mean, on average, the two rescues in town do 10 calls per day, you know, and that is divided, I wouldn't say that it's divided equally between Valley Falls and our current location, but looking at, you know, peak times, the software that we presently have in place, we can identify, you know, the peak times of day that, you know, the rescues do go out. And, you know, some of the times that we're talking or we're speaking of would be, you know, somewhere in the 5:00 hour. And last year, 2013, we responded to 206 calls throughout that time slot, 5:00 to 6:00 PM, by way of an example, throughout the entire year. Now, there are days of the week that are busier than others, you know, and those days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And certainly, that is data that comes from a software program. Information is put in, information is taken out. The thought of the impact that we would have in traffic in that space, 10 calls a day, the majority of the calls were not driving up Diamond Hill Road. So, and I'm not going to argue the point, and I don't want to do that. And again, I do appreciate the passion. And, you know, it's one of those things where we just, you know, we have to, we have to take a look at all sites. We've looked at this site, or a study, I'd identified this as being a probable or possible site on recommendation, and that's where we are today. I mean, I think right now, what the council and President Higgins is trying to get to, and the point he's trying to make is, that this is something that the council needs to vote on. Clearly, out of this meeting comes research, and a lot of us, all of us, myself included, need to do some additional research. And I'm more than happy to do that. I don't have a problem with that. I believe, you know, I believe every, the passion that's being displayed this evening on both sides, you know, it's there, and I'm all for it, you know? But I think that, you know, council that, you know, is representing, not hired, but is representing the, you know, the folks here, you know, that are part of this alliance, that needs to be looked into, and we have legal counsel that'll do that.
Thank you.
But right now, this is about a vote. This is about a vote, and that's what we're looking to do. I have no further comments.
This young man in the middle, you've already spoken, haven't you?
I have not.
No, the lady next to you.
I just felt the conversation about the traffic study.
The mayor's already indicated that he's going to have a traffic study done. No, that is for a use that's totally different than this. Come up, sir, young man. Please state your name and address.
Austin McCarthy Kelly, 63 Rosson Road.
Okay.
I would first like to ask specifically of you, Councilman Higgins, a question. Do you or do you not believe that the prospective public safety complex should be built on the monastery grounds that have been set aside for, that have been, not set aside, excuse me, that have been posited by the council as a potential site? Do you agree that the, do you believe, excuse me, do you believe that that is where the public safety complex should be built, Councilman?
I believe that the voters should decide whether that site is appropriate.
I'm, I'm, okay.
Thank you.
My, my second question would like, my second item would like to be to bring up the obvious flusterment on both sides. You, yourself, sir, seem to be upset by some of the conduct on this side and vice versa. And I would just like to point out the, that there seems to be a lack of respect on both sides, including in the testimony of Mr. Joshua, was it?
No, that's the solicitor.
Oh.
Mr. Hafner, he's the solicitor.
Mr. Hafner, I apologize.
It's all right.
I'm sorry. I maybe, I mixed you guys up. Sorry. I would just like to address and bring to the attention, sorry, I can't quite recall your name, sir.
Tom.
Tom. Mr. Tom. I would like to bring up the disrespect that Mr. Tom, no offense to your character, sir, but by referring to Mrs. McCarthy as your sister, you are showing her disrespect. To my knowledge, the two of you are not related, and I understand...
Let me explain, let me explain to you.
I understand that he is referring to someone of the legal profession. I understand the intent. However, I do not, I would like to ask of Mr. Tom, would he be referring to a, if Mrs. McCarthy was a man and a male lawyer, would you be referring to said hypothetical male lawyer as your brother?
That's a very common, what you don't, you may not understand, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, is that by calling Ms. McCarthy his sister, he's actually showing her respect. It's a way of showing respect in a courtroom, as opposed to calling her my opponent, or, you know, something like that. So, yeah, it's very common for lawyers to refer to each other in discussions before the court as my brother or my sister. It's, and if it's insulting to Ms. McCarthy, then we'll stop doing it.
Well, I believe it would be more respectful, despite the obvious legal precedent there, to refer to one as one's colleague, you know, my colleague or counsel, as you later did.
Perhaps, perhaps the tradition is outdated. I'll concede you that.
Is that directed towards me because of my youth, sir?
Please.
Because of my youth, sir? Are you directing that?
Oh, no, because it could be considered sexist.
That is the spirit in which I had taken it, sir.
But thank you. Yes, Ms. McCarthy, we'll hear from you again. And thank you for your comment.
Thank you. That was my son standing up for me, so thank you, officer. But I didn't take it as a, thank you.
You should be very proud of him.
I am, I am, but I did not take it as a sign of disrespect. I just want to clarify two things. First, I don't know if it was clear in my initial testimony. I'm not disputing that the council has the right to change their ordinance or the comprehensive plan. Both of those are within your rights and discretion to change. It's only the easement which constitutes a conservation restriction and is subject to the law. And the other thing was, I believe, if, I'm going to paraphrase you, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you said something to the effect that if you can't change, use the land, the 10 acres, for the public safety complex, then you can't donate the 515 lands to a land trust. And the reason that's not true is that the use of the land as a public safety complex is inconsistent with the easement, but the use of it, giving it to a land trust, would be consistent with the easement.
Okay, I didn't say that was the case. I asked.
Oh, well, at least that's my position. That's my position.
Thank you for your clarification.
Thank you.
Hand in the middle, I don't know. Now, it's down. The hand was up, now it's down. Yes, you, are you? Well, can we do somebody else that hasn't spoke?
Make one mistake?
All right, come up, come up. I'm not going to be accused of shutting people down.
I just want to say that after what I've heard tonight and what I've seen, I think putting the referendum on the ballot at this point is premature.
Thank you. This young man. Have you spoken yet?
No.
All right. And I don't mean any disrespect by referring you as young man.
Oh, that's fine.
What's your name?
I'm Ian McCarthy Kelly of 63 Rosson Road.
Okay.
Ms. Carron said that there was, that she had a 20-page document of properties owned by the town...
Yep.
...with 45 items on each page. My question is, have all 900 properties of the town been reviewed as possible locations for this public safety complex?
I haven't seen the list. Do you have a copy of the list? Would you give it to the mayor or the chief, and we'll take a look at it and respond at a lady's feet? I don't know that, keep in mind that it may include land that's already conservation land.
I understand.
So, no, there could be some parcels on there that have been considered, but I haven't seen the list, so I couldn't respond to your question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Behind the man that just coughed.
My name is Jennifer McElusay. I live at 25 Lockwood Road. I have one question.
What was the road?
25 Lockwood Road.
Lockwood.
Lockwood.
ARK or OKK?
LOCK.
Okay. Did you get her name? Yeah, thank you, go ahead, appreciate it.
My question is, I've heard, and sort of, people alluding to the fact of fire being put there, as well as rescue and the police, and that's what I'd like clarification on, if that's the intent use of that land, or to make that a possibility of.
Well, what the intent is to reserve 10 acres of land from the 525 acres and use it for municipal purposes. Now, this, whether a, whether a police, whether a fire station would be located there would depend on a number of factors, but I'm not going to say it's not a possibility at some point in the future, that a fair, but it would have to be subject, because if and when, let me also clarify, that if and when we do amend the ordinance that Council of Mutter at the time had, it will contain, if I have anything to do with it, a provision that any development of this parcel, parcel, this 10-acre parcel, would be subject to voter approval.
So, can you just, I'm not quite sure...
In other words, if, right now, we are putting before the voters a question about a public safety building...
Correct.
Police and fire, okay? I mean, police and rescue.
Right.
The fire committee is getting elected in November, so it would be my understanding that what is being requested of the voters, and the mayor can agree or disagree, is permission to put up a police-fire, a police and rescue facility. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
And that if another, if a town hall was going to be located there, or if there was, no, and I'm not saying it is.
Well...
Well, you can't say a word here without getting...
No.
If a fire station... If, if a fire station would be built on this land, it would be subject to voter approval, in my opinion.
In your opinion, or is that actually what we're going to be-
Well, that's what I'm going to propose, if, if, uh, if the, if the ordinance is amended, that any, any development-
Well, I think we need to know the question, the answer to that prior to voting for saying yes or no to a public safety?
It is my position, and, and others, councillors can concede that, uh, any, the 10-acre land, I intend to support, uh, authorizing any future use other than a police or rescue facility, I intend to request the voters to vote on that question if it arises. Do you understand what I said? No?
Well, what I'm saying is, if I were to vote yes tomorrow-
Yeah.
-to, do we need a public safety?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
And then I vote yes to the land?
Yeah.
Does that give the right to have a fire station put there and/or an administration building or anything else you want to put there? That's the question I mean.
The vote does not, no.
The vote does not, okay.
No. It'd be my position that, uh, any other use, fire, municipal or otherwise, would be subject to voter approval. Because it involves issues like that affect neighborhoods. Your concern is that you, whether you want a fire station up the road from you, I understand that.
Well, actually, that's not a bad thing-
Well, it depends sometimes, it's a good thing when it comes to insurance and fire safety, and it's a bad thing when it comes to noise. But I lived near a fire station when I lived in Providence when I was at PC, and it can wake you up pretty loud in the middle of the night. So I hope we've answered your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, councilman, um, what's your name? DeCasta, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like clarification on the answer to the, to the lady, um, because if the question is approved, it opens the door to the building of any structure in the future, including the relocation of town hall. So, by saying that it would not permit the fire station to go there, um, it's a little misleading, in my opinion.
At the time that the mayor is ready to proceed with the, um, separating out of the 10 acres, which would still be protected under the current, whatever legal is there, and giving the 515 to a third party, I will propose an ordinance that will limit development of the 10 acres, further development, other than what the voters are voting on here, I will propose an ordinance that would require a referendum before any additional buildings are approved. Uh, who hasn't spoken, this young lady here? You'll be next, don't, don't look so sad, she had her hand up first.
Um, Olivia McCarthy Kelly, Rossen Road. Um, in a further question, a previous question, you had personally stated that you disagreed with the legal counsel that was presented here today, and I was hoping that you could please clarify where the law that was presented is unclear and your belief, um, in this matter.
I'm not, I, I think I further commented after I said that, that, um, I'm not sure if it applies, I haven't had time to look at it.
I understand that.
And the solicitor seems to indicate he disagrees, but that's all right, I don't just take whatever he says.
So then, I suppose, can I redirect my question to the solicitor here? What about the easement do you disagree with? It's my question, because you've expressed disagreement and I feel like it's rather good cut.
I, I guess people still don't understand my position, my position is the only issue before this town council tonight is to vote on whether the voters want this, at this location or not. And then if there is a requirement or requirements legally, as legal counsel has stated, then that would have to be addressed after the fact. So rather than wait another two years to have another referendum, we felt it better to go forward with this.
Yeah, and let me point out to-
And I disagree with legal, I disagree with legal counsel.
I mean, I'm, people may not think I'm giving a lot of leeway here, but the real issue should be limited to whether the question should go on the ballot.
That's correct.
So, if there's a legal impediment to the construction of a building, it would have to be addressed before the building was built. Okay?
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
That clears up one aspect, but I'm still confused as to why your opinion is what it is. I understand we're here for the ballot vote-
Mm-hmm.
-but I would like to know where the discrepancy is with the law.
Well, in all fairness to him, he was, he wasn't made aware of the issue until this afternoon, at 6 o'clock, when I called him to ask him to look at it.
So we have a strong position against without reviewing it?
I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna respond to what your argument is in favor or against, because I don't know the answer.
Okay, so-
Well, you're trying to make the point that your, the legal counsel that has made the point is, is valid, and I have no reason to assume otherwise, but I would like the opportunity to review that myself as well.
Yes, so that, that's really what I was trying to get at, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we've been, yes, I promise you next, you, you look familiar.
Well, I live in Cumberland.
Okay. Probably cited Dave's or something.
Jane Gerton, Frederick Lane.
Okay.
Um, I would like to, sorry, I would like to speak to the construction of the question.
Okay.
Assuming that the question can actually be presented to, um, the people of this town, and that is that it appears that it's lacking some real transparency, and it does not in any way refer to the easement, the conservation easement and the restrictive covenant documents as amended anywhere within the question. And so, if we are to make an informed decision about the placement of a new safety complex, we really need all of the information so that we know we're making an educated choice or decision.
All right, it is in section one of the resolution, but it's not contained in the question, your, your point is-
My point is, is that the voters of this town need to understand that this land is protected in perpetuity forever, in a conservation easement that was signed 10 years ago. And that's, that's assuming the absurdity of being able to enter this as a ballot, into a ballot question. Assuming that can happen, the question needs a few more clauses in it, frankly.
Well, we kind of simplified it so that it would be easier to understand, wasn't no ill, there was no ill intent in that.
Well-
Thank you for your comment.
I have one question for you-
Go ahead.
-before I sit down. Um, you mentioned that the ordinance, or the easement perhaps, does say that the, the land can be used for municipal use? And I'm wondering if you can-
No, I didn't say that.
You didn't say that?
I said that it was purchased initially, before the easement was recorded for municipal use.
Um, I've come through all of the documents and I have not seen those words anywhere within them, and so I'm wondering if you can give me a site, so I can find it for myself.
There's several articles in the Pawtucket Times.
I'm not talking about articles of what people suggested, or, or what someone's vision might have been, I mean, is there a legal document that references that language?
There may be contained in the original deed a limitation, uh, I believe, that the property could only be used for municipal or recreational purposes, is that correct, Mr. Heffernan? Yeah.
And that deed is available for the public to look at here at town hall?
Public records and the land records.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, yes, young lady in the back there, this voter in the back.
Hi.
Name?
Annette Thibault-Pulio. I have a general question. I know I attended several meetings, and the mayor has mentioned that they were looking for the best centralized location-
Yeah.
-which would be best for the town residents. I'm looking at this map, um, this is the whole town, why is the best location for the complex the south end of town and not anywhere in the middle? It, it was mentioned several times to be the best centralized location, I don't understand how the south end of town is the best location.
All right, well, let's see if we can get an answer, Sean? It was identified as a location by a consultant who studied, uh, public safety, but that's the answer, but I'm sure Mr. Thompson could clarify it. It doesn't mean the, well, go ahead, Mr. Thompson. I don't know what's in the center of land, it could be open space in the town.
There's a lot of area that's available, I'm sure, that's centralized to the residents north. Where, down here, it's in color, you can't miss it.
I haven't seen the-
Definitely nowhere near centralized.
If you want to leave the map, I'd be glad to take a look at it after, with a mark or wherever. If you want a map, where you think it should be, or mark it, you want a pen? Give her a pen, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Annette, uh, does that complete your comment?
Yes, it does.
Have a comment on that, go on.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was present during Mr. Jacobs' presentations, as well as the GPS study that was done based on call volume and, uh, population and a whole bunch of other demographic, demographic data and activity. Um, but it was very clear by Mr. Jacobs that Cumberland is shaped like an inverted triangle, and the three-station model, as far as deployment, was the best strategically by having, um, fire and rescue in the locations where the most activity occurs. And, and he said, quote, "That the best three locations are the ones we currently have in Cumberland Hill, North Cumberland, and the Valley, and the Valley Station, because they're near the most calls." Centralizing deployment, in this case, can put the rescue out of position unless you had two up in the north and one in the south. Put them in the center of town actually brings them further away from where, uh, these folks from Jacobs and, and Associates said they should actually be. I wanted to clarify that, thank you.
You want, you want to, uh, you want to address that, Sean? And I mean, again, i- i- the issue is, is whether we're going to put it on the ballot.
See, in a perfect world, Councilor Lanley, we would have three rescues, but I don't think our call volume supports that. So from, you know, from being financially responsible in that, in that space, I don't think it's, you know, again, I don't think in a perfect world, in an ideal system, you know, to have a rescue or an ambulance in Valley Falls, one in North Cumberland, one in Cumberland Hill, coming in, may work. But right now, we don't have that. The call volume doesn't support that. It doesn't support the, the budget for that. We're talking about an additional eight members, and I don't know the exact figures on what it would cost to hire eight new employees, but I'll, I'll ballpark it at roughly $720 to $800,000, you know, with benefits and what have you. And when you look at responding outward, and again, training our outliers, our first responders, that being police, fire, to perform CPR, to initiate basic life-saving, uh, skills, that enables them to begin the stabilization process, so that when the rescue responds from the center of town, and again, hitting these, you know, hitting these areas from the center of town, anywhere between 6 to 8 minutes, 85% of the time, that, that helps, we're still meeting the standard, we're meeting the standard. Now, if we had, and we have two vehicles, if we had a vehicle at Cumberland Hill by way of an example, and we have a vehicle in Valley Falls, Valley Falls is busy, it's a busy truck, it's a busy, it's a busy rescue. We do, uh, we do provide mutual aid, uh, to the city of Central Falls, we provide it to the town of Lincoln, and, you know, in those, somewhere to, you know, to the tune of roughly 20 calls per month, on average, you know, to those surrounding communities. In the event that we have somebody who's in cardiac arrest here in Valley Falls, in this building, the study also showed that, you know, if, if fire, and I'm just going to use, because they were referring to fire vehicles and the response times regarding fire vehicles, they gave us a time of roughly 11 to 12 minutes. Now, the American Heart Association puts out studies on a regular basis, every five years, they come out with scientific sessions and they can, they constantly identify downtime. Every minute that passes, we decrease the chance of survival by 10%. If we have a rescue responding from Cumberland Hill to Valley Falls, we'll call it 10 minutes, the chance of survival is zero. That's what we're talking about. Now, if we're talking about ideal systems and you want to spend an extra $800,000, I'll approach the council at some other time to, to bring that up, and I'll gladly speak to you this, you know, speak to this, speak of this with you in private, I certainly would love to have that conversation. But right now, as it stands, to have trucks or our rescues coming across town to respond 10 minutes in a cardiac arrest, a choking child, that's a long time. I've been there, I've done that. It's, it's too long, people die. And that's why, you know, when you look at deployment strategies, if you have an outward in, you run into these problems, particularly the way this town is designed. It's long, it's rectangular. If we, you know, design systems with our, you know, our neighboring town, Lincoln, and we talk about strategic planning, and we talk about, you know, perhaps combining the rescues to provide some, some form of a regional strategy, could this work? Perhaps. Could it work implementing different strategies, different plans, different ideas? Yes, it could. But again, I, I think that's not what we're here to discuss this evening. And we've discussed this in the Jacobs report, we've discussed it at length in the Jacobs report. I think this evening we're talking about two questions on a ballot. Two questions on the ballot, and, and that's where we are. It has nothing to do with deployment strategies presently, it has nothing to do with a fire study that was done by Don Jacobs, there's information in there, some of it is, you know, I, I think it's valid.
Mr. Thompson, though, you, you referenced the study earlier, and now you're saying-
No, but what I'm saying is that, I was using it as a timeline.
You spoke, and I, I just want to be clear, and that's why I brought it up again, I, I really couldn't listen to too much more testimony, when we're talking about deployment strategies and he came in and said, "The three stations we have are ideal, they're within a quarter mile," I believe was what the study said, of being absolutely geographically perfect, and with our, our firefighters trained as EMTCs, almost paramedic level training, closest to the response, and then we want to try to take them and bring them into the center of town, it goes against what the study said. So I, I know this is not a debate about, this is a debate we should be having for months leading up to this discussion. Unfortunately, it's the 11th hour, and we have to talk about putting a question on a ballot. I appreciate and respect all you've done, you know I'm a big fan of your department, we have the best paramedics in this state, but I have to disagree respectfully, sir, that the study was very clear, that the three deployment stations we currently have, excluding the one at the end of 116, are strategically located, and, and, um, and, and I just want to leave it at that, thank you.
And, and again, Councilor Lanley, no disrespect, but he mentioned three rescues, not two. He mentioned three. And I'm not going to disrespect, I'm not going to show any disrespect toward the educational standard, if you will, for the EMT cardiac that you make reference to, or the EMT, you know, in, in comparison to the paramedics. However, national standard curriculum, it's roughly 10% of the training for the EMT cardiac versus the EMT paramedic, and we have a true paramedic service in this town, one of three in the state. So, and it's not to say that everybody can't be trained to provide high-quality CPR, we've seen it work. In these council meetings, you know, I've been waiting to get a young gentleman who we responded to, you know, mutual aid Central Falls, 25 years of age, in here, who was in cardiac arrest, witnessed sudden cardiac arrest, and our paramedics went in mutual aid and saved his life, and I met with him. He's a handsome, vibrant young man, he's very exciting. But if a second call came in for cardiac arrest, where Central Falls was using our resources mutual aid, Lincoln was clearly not available, I'm assuming based upon them not responding to the call, Pawtucket was not available, and we had a similar incident happen in the southern part of the town, the chance of survival for that person would be zero.
All right, thank you. Um, you've already spoken, sir. Yes, in the back? Got you. And, you know, it's, I'm, I'm trying to let everyone speak, uh-
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Gerald Ducati, I'm on Maori Avenue, and I just wanted, um, to ask some questions for clarification, because it sounds like we're probably going to have a vote no on two. I just want to make sure I understand correctly when I talk to my fellow citizens about what's going on. Let's say there is no legal, um- Let's say there is no legal anything, or roadblock, I should say, against turning over the 2004, I don't know if it's a referendum, what you'd want to call it, but you have to turn that over in order to get those 10 acres. You put the other acres into a 20-year protection. Once that 20 years is over, there's no more 2004 thing, there's no more 20-year thing, there's nothing protecting it. Is that correct?
I don't think so because the 2004 thing, unless it's changed, which it will be for the 10 acres, it won't be changed for the 515.
Okay. My understanding was you'd have to change the entire thing and not just...
No, we can carve out portions of it if the council or the, so agrees.
Okay.
According to the solicitor, we can amend the management plan and the easement. If that's a legal impediment, we'll find out, I'm sure.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. No, yes, Representative, we heard from you last time. We know what your position is, but come up and restate it.
State Representative Jim McGlocklin, District 57, Councilman Dwyer, Councilman DeCosta, I'm here tonight to represent my district. And also to propose an option for you gentlemen. I received a call the other night of a proposed site that could be doable, close proximity to the monastery. Square footage seems to be good. It all stems on sales and purchase arena. Whether it's a viable site, that will have to be determined by you people and the mayor. I'd like to state my position. This is my district.
Did you identify the parcel when you're coming?
If you would like me to, I could...
Would you tell, well, no, because if it is, if it further, if it becomes a potential site that would need to be purchased, I'd rather keep it, you know?
I, I...
Like, it could jeopardize the purchase of the property if they, if public safety officials...
Yes, this is what I, this is what I want to...
So would you please do me a favor and speak to the chief of police about that parcel?
I mentioned to him briefly tonight. What I would, you know, there's been much vetting here, you know?
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that.
And I look, and there's a lot of passion. Believe me, there's a lot of passion. But I'd like to also reiterate, I've been out there in my district to the tune of 2,000 voters, probably a couple thousand houses I've had already, okay? And the sentiment is, I serve the people of my district, you know? And that's my job. The realization is, we need a safety complex, okay? We all acknowledge that. But I don't think all other alternatives have been explored. So with that said, I would ask you to just set the resolution aside, listen to the proposal, and I think it's a very viable proposal. The arguments set forth, there were some things that I don't even want to go into tonight. I've done extensive research, you know, in reference to that 524 parcel, acres. With the help of a gentleman, he probably wouldn't want me to acknowledge him tonight, so therefore I will not. But in 1968, Governor John Chapey designated the monastery park with, along with a check for $576,000, $576,624.20, for the sole purpose of conservation and recreation. He had the foresight to see what a beautiful piece of property was. So I would ask that you, you gentlemen, in sincerity, explore this option, you know, that I have, and I will share with you the mayor administration. And I think it is doable. With that said, thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Go ahead. You're the last one.
Linda McDermott, Newell Drive.
Okay.
The state adopted the town's comprehensive plan for the open space and conservation of the monastery. So I was just wondering if, in the question that you posed to the Secretary of State, also make that clear, that the town currently owns real property fronting Diamond Hill Road, totaling approximately 525 acres of conservation land, and that there is a conservation easement on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, final words.
Yes. I just want to tell you why the $12.5 million was put on the ballot, was that I did make a commitment to our police chief and our rescue director, based on their experience, which I respect, that it, that we should move forward with a public safety building, complex, whatever you want to call it. And then I compared that up against the current financial situation of the town, and I married that need against, as I always have, against the town's ability to pay for the facility. And the time is correct. The window of opportunity is now, debt is being retired at a rate that would allow the taxpayers, if it's managed properly, I'm not going to be here, but if it's managed properly, to have no, no significant impact on their taxes. That's the reason why I moved forward with the $12.5 million question. The reason why this question was separated was because when I was asked whether or not the, the site had been determined, and I said, "No," I wasn't believed. And so then the movement went to start lobbying for something I believe the town needs to vote against it because I wasn't believed. And that's the reason why the question was separated. That's the real reason. Remember, there was no second question until the impression was made and the petition that was posted. But by the way, I congratulate Alex. I love the fact that she's leading based on that youth commission and the leadership program that's in place. But that was clearly, the intent was to move against something I really believed in that needed to be done for the town that matched up to the financial ability of the town to pay for it. So instead of having the question up in the air, that's the reason that I'm asking the council to put it on the ballot, so that the $12.5 million would have the best chance of getting passed, for the reasons I just stated. I can tell you that if there wasn't the connect that was made at the time, there would only be one question on the ballot. There would only be one question on the ballot. But because there was this, certainly more than a strong undercurrent, because I read in the papers, that, that, that the location had been determined, instead of having what I believe, I've been told by legal counsel, that this council does have the authority to move forward on that. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to have the debate on the legal issues. So here's your options. There's a need. I'm hearing tonight, there's a need. If you want, if the, if the question went independent of the second question, does it get voted down because I'm not being believed, that, that I'm not even going to be here to choose the, the location? I don't want to jeopardize that $12.5 million vote. I think that that is an extremely important thing for this town. I don't believe that we should be living in Andy and Mayberry at our police station or our rescue. So the reason it's separated was, there wasn't a, there wasn't a sense of confidence that I was telling the truth. And that's the reason why it was separated, because that's what, that's what was starting to be published, and, and let's vote against the complex because there was a location that was predetermined. Look, if Mr. McGlocklin has a better site, if, if the property owner who was up here, who owned 15 acres, wanted to sell that property, I would have pursued that. I am not aware, and, and if I was asked the question, of course, I'm not up for reelection in the town, but I think I've been honest virtually every single time I've asked the question. If I was asked the question that that young man asked, I would say, to my knowledge, that's the best location for a public safety complex in the town of Cumberland. That's just me. I get to go vote one time. So now it's a perplexing issue because, because this council, or the next council, I believe, has the authority to move forward. I'm not sitting in this seat to manage the issues as I have managed to the best of my ability for, I'm in my 12th year. So, I mean, I, I don't know. You know, I can tell you that, you know, I don't know what, which way you should go because I think that that $12.5 million thing should pass. And I think that every option of a site should be considered. And I haven't been believed on that, that we have looked at multiple spaces and nothing has turned out that would meet the standard that I, of the respect I have for both Chiefs de Maris and, and Sean Thompson, our director of rescue. So I think that it should go on the ballot because let the people decide. If they vote it down, they vote it down. If they vote it up, you deal with the, you deal with the legal issues that you have to deal with. But I can tell you right now that when the $12.5 million question was put forward, there wasn't a predetermination of where that could go. And I fully realized that there was easements and there were ordinances that were in place. So I can live with whatever this council decides, but please, just pass the $12.5 million question. Put it, I'm not going to be here to manage it. Many of the town council members are not going to be sitting there. Put it, put it in front of the council. They're going to determine where the final location goes, and I'm not, and this council's not. So I, I really don't know which way to ask you to go, to tell you the truth, because I think you need that thing passed. The financial, financial issues are in place to get it done. And I, I can't even tell you which way to go. I can't even tell you which way to go. But as long as, I, as long as the question on the $12.5 million gets the ballot, which was four to three, four to three on that, on that question, four to three, and the reason it was four to three was because of the, the lack of belief that the location hadn't been predetermined, I think. At least that's what was mentioned. So I don't know where you can go other than to put it on the ballot. Because if it's four to three, because of, there's not a belief that, that that location is, you know, carved in stone, that's not carved in stone, I don't know how you clarify this issue and still get the vote that needs to be done for public safety in the town of Cumberland. And in a future council, quite frankly, could determine that they don't want to put it there. And they could, Mr. McGlocklin might have a better site. I, I don't know how you could not just put it on the ballot based on everything I just said and for those reasons that I said it. Because I don't have the, I have not heard that, that there is a sense that, that that site has not been predetermined. I haven't heard it.
Okay. All right, council, we're at the stage where we need to call this question, which is whether the issue shall be, the location shall be placed on the ballot as one that is a lot suitable by the voters, and that would only be the question, whether the question shall be put on the ballot to ask the voters whether this location is suitable. The question on the ballot does not authorize, does not actually award contracts for the building, does not, you know, obviously have to be, you have to resolve any legal impediments that exist. But what we're seeking is to get the pulse of the entire town as far as any development for this purpose, public safety, on this property.
Mr. President.
So I'd like to have a motion, one way or the other, in the affirmative, hopefully, and then we'll have discussion. We've been... Yes, Councilor Landby?
Thank you.
Wanted...
I don't know if the question is going to pass or not, but I do know based on some, some of our public comments tonight, that the wording is somewhat suspect and/or required, may require modification. And I was wondering, particularly with the title of the question, it references building on town land, and I was wondering if, if the council would entertain a motion to amend this question too, to replace town land with the monastery, to make it a little bit clearer, at least in the title, for folks who are reading this referendum question in November.
You want to amend the title? Does that appear on the ballot, Mr. Hefner?
I'm sorry?
Does the heading of the...
The heading, the heading is part of the ballot. I was going to make a suggestion, Councilor Landby, that it be "Construction of a public safety building on a portion of the monastery property."
I think on town land, on a portion of monastery property. I want to know that the town owns it.
Well, then I had suggested, "Shall the Cumberland Town Council authorize construction of a public safety building on town land known as the monastery located on Diamond Hill Road across from the U.S. Post Office?"
Yeah.
"...which is a portion of Assessor's Plot 22 Lot 8, not to exceed 10 acres. Said building to be built in an area north of the power lines, which begin at Lynch Park, with the town continuing to preserve the remaining 515 acres of the monastery land."
Land otherwise known as the monastery. So, Councilor, instead of just getting rid of the term "town land," can we just add...
Town land known as the monastery?
Low-key, well, I don't, the heading has to be somewhat succinct, you know?
Well, we use the same reference in the body of the question.
But the heading can't go on and on. I mean, town land, what? I'm trying to work...
Could we say town land slash monastery?
I don't know if I want slashes of it.
If, if you, if you have it the way I originally suggested, you will then be able to read and know that it is the monastery. You'll know that it's town-owned land, and you'll know that the remaining 515...
Well, that's assuming people actually read everything, right?
Unfortunately, I do, I do think that at times. I...
So what are you suggesting, Mr. Hefner, on the heading?
I think it is clear as you can that it's the monastery. "Construction of a public safety building on a portion of the monastery property owned by the town."
Okay. Is that all right?
That's okay with me.
Councilor Landby moves to amend the heading. Say it by Councilor Maury. Discussion on the amendment. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, that passes 7-0. Further amendment, Councilor Landby?
Yes, sir. I think Mr. Hefner had mentioned a piece in the middle.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, because of the way that is worded, you can just leave the text of the question... of the question.
Well, I would be in favor of inserting a reference to the monastery.
Right after land.
After, in between land and located.
Yes.
So, Council Lambie moves to amend the actual question itself by inserting between the word "land" and the word "located," the following language.
Known as the monastery.
Yeah, known as, comma, known as the monastery, comma. Seconded by Council Dwyer. Is that okay?
Yes.
Another suggestion.
Well, let's vote on this amendment first. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those against, passes seven-nothing. Mr. Hefner?
Because you now have inserted "known as the monastery," which you just voted on. When you get to the last line, I would suggest, after the words "acres of the," that you strike out the words "land otherwise known as the monastery," and insert "monastery land." It just cleans up the language. It's redundant to what you just.
All right, so it would read, "Five hundred fifteen acres of monastery land, period."
Of the monastery land, correct.
Of the monastery land, period. Anybody have any issues with that?
Motion.
Council Kearns moves to amend. Seconded by Council Murray. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Those against, passes seven-nothing. On the resolution as amended, pleasure the council.
Mr. President.
Council Murray.
I'd like to make a motion on our 1438A as amended, to be placed on the ballot.
Council Murray moves to put it on the ballot.
Second.
Seconded by Council Kearns. Discussion, Council Lambie.
Mr. President.
Discussion, Council Lambie.
Thank you.
Just want to get the question before the council.
Thank you very much. I don't intend on voting for putting this question on the ballot. I wanted to make sure that it had been properly worded, just in case my no vote did not count tonight. So, I want to be clear on that. And I want to be clear on a couple of things. We talked about open space costing nothing for the town. That's simply not true, as an earlier statement tonight. We have a million dollar bond that still currently has a balance outstanding that costs the taxpayer a lot of money, and millions of other dollars that is spent by the town in protecting open space. And it is a gem of our town, open space, and this is certainly one of them. I have a lot of other comments, but I'm going to cut right to the chase here. And really, the testimony I heard tonight from two past community leaders, Mr. Norbrega and Mr. Mutter, when they both confirmed for me that the intent of the easement and the resolutions and/or ordinances that were drafted and voted on and approved unanimously just ten years ago, not twenty years or fifty years, just ten years ago, the intent was to protect that land in perpetuity. Perpetuity means forever. It's no excuse for this council to say, "We didn't read the easement, we don't know if the state law applies." The bottom line is, when you read the easement, it's very clear that it says that it's protected, and you can't build a building or put parking lots in there unless you go to the state to get permission. Now, I just think, and maybe it's what I've been exposed to in politics over the last eighteen months, but I just think that this attempt to get this referendum passed by the folks of town, which I don't think will pass, but it's an attempt to sidestep what is an easement that is meant to protect this land. And when the town goes to the Attorney General to fight its case and make its case, and they say, "Mr. Attorney General, look, our voters approve this, fifty-one percent to forty-nine. See, they really want it." Again, I think this is an attempt to sidestep the ordinance and easement that are already in place. Now, if we don't put this question on the ballot, we will be back here to talk about it, and we'll have a room full of folks, just like we do tonight, and we'll have to tell them that we want to disregard them, and we want to put a public complex on this property, which will be a very difficult thing to do. So, I genuinely think that the referendum is the only chance that the administration has of putting this complex on the monastery ground. And for that reason, and for the many others that were discussed, and basically, I didn't hear anyone state publicly that, I heard one person talk about putting the question on a ballot, but not one person said, "I want this complex on that property," as far as the people who were paying the bill.
Mr. President.
I'm not even going to attempt to address the number of inaccuracies that were in that statement. And I would, you know, in all reality, I let you go on, because I've let everyone else go on, but it's not germane to the question before us, which is, "Shall the question be placed on the ballot?" So, if everyone else wants to make a speech about how this doesn't belong there, I may rule you out of order.
Mr. President.
Council DeCosta.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Council Lambie, if it's any consolation, I may tap you on your record of being out of order. No, seriously now, very pleased. Tonight, we listened to the youth of Cumberland. And from what I see, I think our town is in great hands as a bright future. And I want to commend you for this, coming here and speaking. Now, our youth is telling us, "Leave the monastery alone." They want this land pristine as is, as it was intended to be. Sacred ground, untouched, preserved for them, future generations that will come to Cumberland. I can hear you. I hear that from you. And I won't forget it. Now, we had many discussions, opinions, and we seem to miss the point. It's not the need of a safety complex. Everybody agrees we need it. I respect the chief, the director, the mayor's leadership, and I believe the town is in agreement. The safety complex, I still call it the complex. Forgive me.
I don't think it really matters.
I like the complex.
It's not more than one building.
I know, semantics. So, it's a reality. We need, we need a state-of-the-art facility where the command center, police, I'm for fire and rescue, to be there. State-of-the-art, the future of our town. It's a need. What we seem not to be in agreement is the location. And it's very easy to understand. We had this conversation ten days ago, and ten years ago, there's a law that says, "No additional structures or impervious pavement can be added or constructed on the monastery ground." I can understand that. So, how do we move forward from this? I feel that the voice of the people will always supersede the voices of the few. So, as Council Lambie, I will not be voting for this resolution to be on the ballot, not because I don't trust your judgment, not because I don't want the voices of the people to be heard. But I'm concerned that the transparency of this process is a little cloudy. And we all understand that it's foggy, it's not clear. So, I will keep my comments to this, but if, Mr. President, if you allow me, on a personal level, I would like to comment on opening remarks that were made in these chambers, obviously directed at me. I was not the one that brought politics into this question. You never heard this from me. This is overboard, it's uncalled for. This is not a question to be dealt with on the political world. Unfortunately, there's an election going on, and it's a reality of the situation. We cannot hide it. My position has always been, and it will always be, in favor of protecting our open space, public parks. Not only protection, but we need to improve the quality and the appearance of our public parks. It's a disgrace, the way certain areas of our public parks are presented to visitors and even the residents of the town. We need to allocate more funding to the preservation and the keeping up our grounds and public areas. This is no secret to anyone, that's my position, and that's where I stand. So, when I speak of these issues, it's not political to me. It's simply stating the facts, and obviously, it can be used against you, as it was today. So, I resent, and I hope, certain remarks hadn't been made. Additionally, no one is questioning the integrity of the mayor. His record speaks for itself. Our town is solvent, is in very good shape compared to other localities. And even on the environment, he may have done a good job. We saw the slides, increased of open spaces. But I will never forget this, it was under his administration that the district one that I represent lost the only public park that we had available for our children.
All right.
For our future generations of young.
So, this isn't a campaign commercial we're here. It's got nothing to do with this issue.
It's simply my personal.
No, it's not appropriate for a council meeting.
I know.
But it's going on in the last month in these.
Mr. President, certain comments were made directed at my person.
And I agree that you have a right.
So, I'm just explaining, I want the record to reflect that the people sitting here today, and everyone watching this live over the net, can understand that those remarks aren't correct, and should have never been brought up to these chambers.
Well, the fact of the matter is, you just, you reset everything, you said it, it wasn't transparent. This whole, was that you, Council?
Transparent in relation, in relation, yes.
Transparent.
In relation to putting the question on the ballot, yes. Not transparent to me, yes.
Five hours on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, I want to also address your statement, Council, that your belief that the many will always win over the few.
No.
And yet.
Wait a minute, let me correct you on that, if I could.
Go ahead.
My belief is that the voices of the many should never be suppressed by the voices of the few.
Well, that's exactly.
These are my words, you can print that, and you can quote me on that. That's my belief.
That's a good quote, because that's exactly what you're voting to do if you vote no and don't.
No, because as I mentioned before, I don't believe the process is transparent.
Well, yeah.
And I have doubts about the transparency. No, I'm simply saying that in my view, and I have the right to my personal opinion, I don't feel comfortable voting yes on this question.
That's fine.
I have that right. Thank you.
All right, further discussion. Who's, Council Murray?
I'm not going to get into this political arena that my, where the opponent is bringing up, because that's not the issue here tonight. The issue is simply that we need badly a safety complex building. That's as clear as you can get. The mayor said it, if it stands alone because of all the rumors, the safety complex could go down, and we heard the chief and the rescue director discuss what a tragedy it would be as far as their operations are concerned. So, that's the issue right now. The backup to that is exactly what was explained, taking all the political stuff out of it, is that we have to make sure that this safety complex clearly gets passed. It's very clear, if you listen, it doesn't mean whether it gets passed or it's defeated, that it's a done deal. It's going to be up to who you people think is the right person to lead, after the mayor leaves office, to lead this town. So, it's not a, can I finish? Thank you. I gave you the courtesy to listen for five hours. And all I'm saying is, that it isn't a done deal, whether it's voted up or down, it'd be up to a new administration and a new council to do the best thing for the town. Thank you.
Further discussion.
Mr. President.
Council Schmidt.
You know, there's been a lot of, is my mic on? Can you hear me?
Is the green light on?
Yeah. Good. Okay, last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of things said, most of it in public. And I do believe that when someone makes a mistake, they should admit it and offer an apology. And I'd like to apologize for the mayor, because I did say something in public, which turned out not to be true. The issue I'm referencing is, I indicated that his effort was a violation of the town charter, when in fact, it's not. It's a violation of the town's code of ordinances. Some distinction there, but it made the error, so I'd like to ask forgiveness.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Council. Further discussion? You don't have to, there's no further discussion. Roll call vote, Council Schmidt.
Just want to make sure I'm voting on the correct thing. This is to put it on the ballot?
This is to put it on the ballot.
No.
Council Kearns.
Yes.
Council DeCosta.
No.
Council Murray.
Yes.
Council Lambie.
No.
Council Dwyer.
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries, the resolution prevails.
All right, please keep the, next item is adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Council DeCosta, seconded by Council Kearns. All in favor?
Aye.
Those against, meeting is adjourned at 10:15 PM.